Including maintaining social distancing and wearing a face covering when and where appropriate.
This is about the next 10 years.
Chair June Wood is not here this morning. Commissioner Johnny Wilson. Vice Chair Dee Clemmons, Commissioner Johnny Gary Barham, Commissioner Vivian Thomas is not on yet. I think they're working on getting her on right now. Commissioner Bruce Holmes is present.
So we have a forum. We'll go ahead and get started. I want to welcome everybody to the Henry County Board of Commissioners meetings. Today is Tuesday, August 4th.
Can everybody go to mute, please?
Are we ready now? Okay, so I want to welcome everybody to the Henry County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Tuesday, August 4th. Approximate time is 9:04 a.m. Stephanie, thank you for doing the roll call for benefits of a quorum. We'll begin with Dunn Ash during the invocation.
Good morning. Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day that you created. God, we shall rejoice and be so glad in it. Lord, we thank you that you're with us, God, even through this COVID-19 situation we're dealing with. We recognize and realize, God, you will bring us through. Lord, we ask you to be with us in the midst of this meeting as we conduct the business of this great county. In everything, God, we do, we give you praise and glory and Christ's name. Amen.
Is anyone else having their computer to freeze up or is it just on my ear? Okay, we'll begin with the pledge. Under God, indivisible, thing, ceasing for all. What means for August 4th is now called quarter. The following planning and zoning items were advertised for this meeting but have been postponed. There are four items. Public hearing MC 20-01 in District 3. Public hearing RZ 20-02 in District 4. Public hearing RZ 20-01, District 3. Public hearing MC 20-02 in District 2. All of these zoning items have been postponed and we. Give the public an opportunity to be present and make comments on those meetings. We will go on with the. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and ask if any commissioners have any amendments to the regular agenda. And we will make this motion with one vote for both the consent agenda and acceptance of the regular agenda. So I'll entertain the motion. I have a motion from Johnny Wilson and a second from Commissioner Vivian Thomas. All in favor? Thank you.
Commissioner Clemmons, or Vice Chair Clemmons. Chair Wood has requested that the item under Board of Commissioners 17B be removed to a later agenda.
Okay, so we'll redo the motion and making a change of 17B being removed from the agenda item. So I'm going to call for the motion again, entertaining the motion of the consent agenda being as printed. The public hearing items of 1 through 4 that are announced to be taken off and 17B to be taken off as well. County manager, you have another amendment?
Yes, ma'am, Vice Chair Clemmons. There's a strong possibility that the finance items in which Mr. Jockster will be presenting will not be available before we get to that item on the agenda. They have to go to market for the bonding. And so there may be an opportunity, we may need to hold off and move that to the end of the agenda to give us time to get to the market and get the information. So if you don't mind, can we just move those items to after the commissioner's comments, please?
Let's just go ahead and.
Vice Chair, you're buffering really bad, so I didn't hear what you said. I heard, let's just. I still can't hear you.
Let's just go ahead and move it to the end.
Okay, thank you very much.
There was some other items that needed to be changed? Was that it? Commissioner Thomas raised your hand. Was there other items that needed to be changed?
No, I'm fine, Commissioner.
Okay, so Patrick, I guess it would be in order for me to just restate the motion with the changes. Okay, so we have the four public hearing items that were for planning and zoning that are coming off of the meeting. And they will be moved to the August 11th meeting, which will be a 6 o'clock p.m. evening meeting. Item 17 that was proposed by Chair June Wood will be taken off. Item 13, our financial presentation will be moved to the end of the agenda item. If there are no more revisions and the consent agenda is fine, I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda as read. I have a motion by Commissioner Johnny Wilson. And a second by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor? Let me know by raise of hands. Stephanie, it's five.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to the proclamation declaring August 11th. A call for 811 before you dig day. Do we have someone to read the proclamation or will we just accept the proclamation as permanent?
Vice Chair, I can read the proclamation if you like.
Please read it.
A proclamation recognizing County 11 Day, a day of awareness for the prevention of damage to underground utilities. Whereas thousands of times each year, the underground infrastructure in Georgia is damaged by those who do not take measures to have underground lines located prior to digging. Resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and threat to public safety. Whereas in 2005, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 a simple phone line number to provide contractors and homeowners a contact to utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended dig site. Whereas the local utility coordinating committee includes Ansco, Atlanta Gaslight, AT&amp;T, Denton, Georgia, Central G A E M C, Charter Spectrum, Comcast, G Dot, G A 811, Georgia Power, Snappy, J. Scholz, E M C, Williams Transco are all stakeholder-driven organizations that are dedicated to the prevention of damage to underground utilities in Henry County and promotes the National 811 Notification System. Whereas damage prevention is a shared responsibility. By using safe digging practices, the contractors and homeowners of Henry County can save time, money, and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected. Now therefore, we proclaim that the Henry County Board of Commissioners recognize August 11th, 2020 as County 811 Day and encourages contractors and homeowners throughout the county to always call 811 before digging. Safe digging is no accident. Signed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Stephanie. At this time, we would invite Amika Pitts, who is the Director of Our Elections and Registrations, to give us an elections update.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I wanted to start by just thanking you all for allowing me to be on here today and as well as the different departments that assisted me in June 9th, whether it was last minute or prior. Sheriff's Department, Risk Management, Grant. So many, just was so helpful, allowing me to get through my first election here in Henry County. Today, I do want to give you an update on what's going on with the runoff. And let me add my. PowerPoint. This was a little different from Zoom, it's not allowing me to add it, so I'll just read from it to you all. So I just wanted to give you all an update, starting with the number of registered voters. As of Friday, July 31st, we have 178,182. Active voters out of that are 166,568,000. Inactive is 11,141 and pending is 473. I will send the PowerPoint out to you all because I also put in the actual active total number of voters for each district. District 1, 34,137. District 2, 40,138. District 3, 38,339. District 4, 33,234. District 5, 32,334. And those numbers for the districts does not include pending. As far as elections update, all precincts are prepared for the August 11th. We have two that do have some changes from June. Red Oak Church was not able to allow us to use the June 9th. So what we did was we went to Red Oak Elementary, which was temporary. We are back now at Red Oak Church. They are available and open for us. Also in Dutch Town, there is First Baptist West Campus Church. They had an emergency. They had notified us recently, late yesterday, that they will not allow us to be able to use the actual church. They will be moving us into the south side office, which is right in front of the church. So it's now a totally different location. It's a matter of moving us out of the church into another office, house that's in front of the church. So I wanted to make sure to notify that. Also, during the runoff, we had. We'll be having some of our staff members went out to do some space evaluations before social distancing. As far as knowing exactly the maximum number of machines that can be held at each polling location. We sent out a number during the June 9th, where some of the locations actually could have taken more. We had about two that could have. So what we're doing is to make sure we send the maximum number of machines, you know, while maintaining social distancing. We're going to make sure each location, not just send a number out, have the max number plus a few extra, just in case if there is needed to replace a machine. As far as PPE, we are on top of that as well. We have little hiccups here and there, but we have a good team to help us with getting those supplies in as well as making sure that we have extras. So if someone runs out or whatever reason, that we have a supply for them to be safe as far as the voters as well as our staff members. We have poll workers for each precinct for the runoff. We're going to have anywhere from five to 10. Some don't need as many as others, just like the machines. And we are also sending out 10 machines for all locations for the runoff. As far as absentee by mail, absentee by mail as of July 31st, we received 7,279 applications requesting ballots by mail. We've processed all 7,279 as of Friday. Absentee ballots received. 3,451. And we received 2,878 that were Democratic and we received 573 that was nonpartisan. For District 1, we received 422 ballots back. District 2 received 1,262. District 3, 561. District 4, 524. And District 5, 682. Applying for absentee ballot applications is very detrimental for this upcoming election. But one of the things that I wanted to make sure that we ran into with the runoff is that you have to make sure that if you apply for absentee ballot by mail and it's for no reason, you have to make sure that you apply each election. There are exceptions from disabled, elderly, military, you'll cover, that will be placed on a all where they will automatically get those absentee's by mail for each election without requesting each time. But anything else would be no reason and you have to make sure that you apply each and every time. So people look confused thinking that if they select it all, that it would get all, but it does, you have to qualify. So I just wanted to make sure I put that information out there. As far as advancing person, so far as of Friday, we have had 1,361 voters to come out and vote in person. The remainder of the week, we will be doing 7 a.m. to 7 p.m. early voting at all locations. You can get those locations off of our Henry County Elections and Voter Registration page on Facebook as well as our website. It's very detrimental to everyone to take a part of the early voting to avoid long lines. All early voting locations. People get confused sometimes to be Election Day polling locations. And I just wanted to put out there to make sure that everyone take advantage of timing beforehand, like this week to maybe go call us or either get on the Motor Voter, Georgia, My Voter page and look up your polling location for Election Day because it's totally different. A lot of people came out, we had a long line that morning wanting to vote here and getting confused with the last time they voted, which was early voting and thinking this was their voting location for Election Day. So I thought that was a very, very detrimental information as well as encouraging people that apply for absentee by mail. If you apply absentee by mail, please make sure that you take the time to fill out that ballot and get it back in by mail and by our office. You can have it to a staff member, go to Dropbox if it's after hours. And we have our front, but it's very important to do that because a lot of long lines issues we had were people coming in wanting to cancel that and wanting to vote in person, which we will accommodate that, but it does take time. So if you already have a line, Election Day before it starts, and you have 10 people back to back that want to cancel absentee ballot, then it causes that also to be an issue with long lines. And that's just some of the issues that I'm trying to work out and I just thought it was some good information to pass out. I also wanted to come to you all and talk about our location. I was hoping that, you know, you all could want to make, I want to make an appeal to ask you all to please revisit about our location. I'm hoping that there was a possibility one time that there was a building for us. If it's still available, I am asking for you all to please consider that. We're in a position now with having to go into the November election, having to do more machines. We're looking at possibly doing 600 plus for November. And this past election, we did 400, it was 440. And the area that we have with everything being so cramped up, it's very hard for us to do the testing for those machines to be prepared for election. We pretty much had to play musical chairs here in the department to move things around. And we're doing 600 plus, it's going to be very difficult. Once we get halfway through, we're not going to have space to even complete the testing without possibly putting machines in locations that would interfere with early voting, where we have the voters to be outlined in the line outside. If there's any way possible to revisit that and possibly get that location so we can do two things that I've come up with that will help us with the space here. If it's just some of a way to rent somewhere so that we can at least have a controlled area that's secure, limited access for the machines that has climate control. That's a possibility or either take my staff and team that handles absentee to another location. I'm really, really needing more space so that we can make sure that we have this election followed through. I've had staff that has gotten cut and hurt and we actually had to get to the point of actually found the risk management, someone getting hurt. It's just, it's just very difficult and I know you all are aware of it, but again, I just wanted to say we've outgrown this location and not just for us to be able to do our very best at making sure that we have this election, you know, tip top, safety reasons as well. We're not able to social distance like we would like to and working together. It's just, it affects daily operation and all, including testing. And that's pretty much it. So that's my update. I'm hoping that you all will work with me in figuring out a way that you can make something happen for us to be able to make sure that we have a location.
Commissioner Holmes, you have a question? And then Commissioner Thomas.
I did. I think we all know that the Elections Office has been in terrible, terrible shape for quite a long time. And I think we could have made a decision to move forward with repairing that building a long time ago. We have made significant improvements to the, to our offices, which I thought were very unnecessary. And I think that money could have been better spent being allocated towards the Elections Office, given the fact that we are in election season. So I want to make an appeal to, to, to the board to consider using funds for, from fund balance for two things. Number one is to remodel the Elections Office to get it up to speed. And number two, I think we need to immediately move to allocate funds to repair the square and place either another monument on the square or a fountain in which, you know, I hear a lot of citizens are requesting. So I'm just going to ask that we consider those two things. I think it's very important to start moving to bring our community back together. And, you know, in this particular case, we should consider using fund balance to move these things forward.
Thank you, thank you. I want to say that I did take time to go visit the Board of Elections Office. And I had an extensive conversation with Ms. Pitts about their needs in that particular area. And I am very concerned. As she stated at this point in time, there are people getting hurt just trying to move around in those offices. And it was very difficult for me to move around those offices. We have people sitting in broom closets and working. They are literally sitting in a broom closet and trying to work. And that's just not acceptable in any form or fashion. So I do support Commissioner Holmes and the fact that we need to find this funding and get something done ASAP. Now, one of the things that was considered, and I believe it was months ago because I was new to the board, newer to the board then, is that there was a place that they were considering renting for a period of time. And I would like to see if that place is still available. And I know I've asked Mr. Johnson to look out to see if that place was still available. If there was another place available, anywhere in the city that we can move them to while we decide how to find something more accommodating for them. Based on the numbers she's given us, we're growing at a rapid speed. They have a lot of things they have to do. 600 pieces of equipment plus people will not fit in the space they're in now. It is not accommodating at all. It does not pass our own building inspections. We can't pass it ourselves. So it's very important that we do something now. I do believe the county manager stated that we have funds already set aside, about $2.5 million, or something in that nature that we've set aside in some particular funds to make sure that we accommodate our Board of Elections. So I'd like to hear from her as well this morning about that. And then I have additional question after that. But I'd like for them to talk about what funds have been set aside to accommodate the Board of Elections, the possibility of renting another space so that we can, as stated before me, find the proper accommodations for our Board of Elections. So I'd like to hear from the chair a break.
Okay. Commissioner Thomas, do you want to hear from them now? Can they respond in their comments, manager comments?
That would be fine. We can question and answer during that time period, so I'm fine with that.
I just want them to make notes so that they can properly give you everything that you need for that. That'll give them time to get information for you.
Thank you. And may I ask a part two of my question? I do believe as we are putting up different election sites or polling sites, a lot of them are in churches. And I too went around and did space evaluation during the last elections. And I, I think I'm right, Ms. Pitts, and you're welcome to correct me, that we do some form of donation or payment to these sites for use of their space. And the reason why I bring that up because in at least two locations I went. And the reason why I bring that up because in at least two locations I went, they were very intimidating. There are a couple of things that concerns me. One, the, the, um, information about signing where people can place sign, it was inside of the facilities. Well, the, the, um, people running for office are not allowed to wear their shirts or anything inside of the facilities because they're candidates and most of them are in their shirts. So we need to find a way to put those instructions outside of the facilities so they can determine where can they put their information for people can have access to it. That was one thing. The other thing I noticed, I took pictures of them. Two sites had hundreds of flags around their facilities. I mean, hundreds of flags looked like to me. Well, I took pictures, maybe I should count them to be specific. So those who watched, there was not a hundred, maybe it was fifty, I'm not sure. But it was a lot of them. And we need to find out what policy do we have in place to state what can be on the grounds on that election day or that election period since we are renting that space? What can be there? And one particular site says, well, this was done by the facility. They own them, we didn't put them up, somebody else put them up. But if we are paying for that space and time, there needs to be a policy of what can and what cannot be in that area. And I'd like to make sure, Ms. Pitts, if you need us to write that or if you need to write that, let us know because I'd be glad to bring that before the board. That's it.
Commissioner Thomas, um, Commissioner, uh, Ms. Pitts, did you want to say something? And then we'll go to Commissioner Vaughn.
Uh, yes, ma'am. I just wanted to respond about the flags. I, um, looked into that. There is no state law, um, being, we're mandated, mandated by state that flags can't be there. But I will look into and find out as far as us renting, um, the location and us using that, you know, property at that time, can there be some type of policy, um, about that? That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Pitts. Uh, Commissioner Vaughn? You're muted, Commissioner Vaughn.
Am I muted?
Go ahead.
Okay. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Uh, you're exactly right on, uh, monies. This, uh, this CIP that we're going to be voting on earth later today, uh, it's got two and a half billion set aside for elections. And I, I would like to hear from the county manager. Are we looking to, to build a new building or just one? And then there's also a section in there, uh, that has a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars set aside for, for the, uh, new roof and decking and gutter replacement. So I'd like to also hear from the county manager, her thoughts about, uh, what this two point five billion dollars is going to do. Is that we're looking at buying an existing place or we are talking about building a new facility? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vaughn. Commissioner Wilson?
I think it was last year when staff looked at a building, uh, in the city of McDonough. And I want to hear from staff again to see if that building is available. And we revisit that because I think at the time it was going to be, uh, in a good, it was at a good location and it was going to be the proper size that they needed. So I, I'd like to revisit that because I think that would be an excellent location for election. So we'll hear from, uh, the county manager on that as well, if you don't mind. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioners. If there's no other questions for Ms. Amika, we thank you, Ms. Pitts, for being here with us this morning. Um, stick around. I'm sure you'll hear something from our county manager about what the plans for the board will do to make sure that you have the facility that you need. And hopefully we can be expeditiously and moving to get ready for November.
Thank you. I appreciate you so much.
We're going to move to our consent agenda items. Uh, we've already voted for the consent agenda items. Um, just wanted to, um, make mention of what they were. Um, in risk management, um, the Association of County Commissions of Georgia, ACCG, we are accepting ten thousand dollars for safety items under our senior services, the CARES Act Aging Subgrant Contract. We are receiving an amount of a hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four under our, uh, resolution approving the contract with the Georgia Department of Human Services, CSBG program. Um, we have, uh, item here that we will be accepting. Is there any other consent items, agenda items, Stephanie, that I missed on here? Oh, Parks and Recreation. But, but Parks and Rec has a CBVI program for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one school year. And we are proving the agreement for the community-based vocational instructions. Uh, Transit has a resolution approving submit of a public transportation agency safety plan and our, uh, emergency management grant fund from Emergency Management Agency. And those are the consent agenda items. Moving on to our regular agenda item, um, the purpose of this next presentation from our tax commissioner, Michael Harris, is to present and to discuss the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one millage rate. Uh, we will also receive public comments at this time after his presentation. This will be a two-part meeting. We have meeting one today, um, now. We will have meeting two at five o'clock and on August eleventh at our six o'clock PM meeting, we will adopt millage rate. So we're encouraging citizens to participate in both, um, each meeting or this afternoon's meeting so that we can get the public comments about our millage rate input. At this time, um, Sherry Hopson Matthews, our county manager and our tax commissioner, Michael Harris, will present to us, um, their presentation for the millage rate. Are you two ready to present? Okay, we'll, we'll hear from you both now.
Yes, Vice Chair, thank you so much for that, um, introduction. Um, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Michael Harris, our tax commissioner, who will give an overview, um, similar to what Vice Chair Clemens has, um, indicated. And then we'll be available to answer any questions that any board member may have.
Good morning, Vice Chair and Commissioners. Hopefully everyone can hear me okay. I'm going to jump right, as, as noted, this is our first hearing, um, of three with the third being our adoption scheduled for August eleventh. I'm going to jump real quickly into our, uh, brief PowerPoint presentation. And can everyone, is that pulled up? Okay? Everyone can hear and see.
No, it is not pulling up yet.
Okay. See which screen, share my screen. There we go. Stephanie, do you have it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, real quickly, um, this is similar to what we did last year. The millage presentation doesn't typically, the process itself doesn't typically change from year to year. But I think it's important every year to kind of go through and give everyone an overview of what the process looks like and just give everyone just a slightly better understanding of, um, anticipation of the tax bills getting ready to come out, what they're going to be seeing in a few, in a few weeks. Okay, so what is the millage rate? Millage rates are just the tax rates that are used to calculate a local property taxes. Um, the rate represents the amount a homeowner has to pay for every one thousand dollars of the property's assessed value. Your assessed value includes both the structure itself and the land on which it sits. Now, when you see, when you receive your tax bill, there'll be two separate property values that'll be included. The fair market value, um, and the assessed property value. The fair market value is determined by the Tax Assessor's Office. They go out annually and do assessments on various properties and use a variety of different methodologies to come up with your property's fair market value. In April, May timeframe, they typically send out an assessment notice letting you know what your property has been assessed at. Um, however, the taxation is based on your assessed value and that represents forty percent of your fair market value. So it's simply whatever your fair market value, your, your appraisal comes out at, forty percent of that, um, equates to your assessed value. Um, we're often asked, how do you go about calculating the county property tax? And it's a relatively simple equation, simply your assessed value minus whatever exemptions may be applied times your millage rate, which should be determined by the Board of Commissioners. Um, and that equals your amount of taxes due. So what I did here, just quickly, just did a, a brief example showing two properties, one homesteaded, one non-homesteaded, both, um, valued at two hundred thousand dollars. Um, so the appraised value of the home being two hundred thousand dollars, uh, that's the fair market value. The assessed value would be forty percent of that, which would take it down to eighty thousand dollars. And then for someone with a basic L one, um, standard homestead exemption, you would subtract fifteen thousand from that assessed value, leaving you sixty-five thousand dollars. And that's the rate that you'd be, um, you'd be, you'd be taxed at. So it'd be sixty-five thousand times the millage rate. Again, for this example, simply use the millage rates that we had in place that were approved for last year, which was twelve point seven seven three. Again, that's divided by the thousand dollars we, we talked about previously. So for a two hundred thousand dollar home with the L one exemption, that would equate to a county tax of eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Um, again, bear in mind, this is not taking into account the taxation on the, um, Board of Education. I assume we're talking about the county tax portion. Taking that same property valued at two hundred thousand dollars, again, fair market value of two hundred thousand dollars times forty percent would give you eighty thousand dollars for your assessed value. Um, without that exemption, you would be multiplying the eighty thousand dollars times the millage rate of twelve point seven seven three. And that would give you a county tax of one thousand eighteen dollars. A difference of roughly about two hundred, about a hundred, in this case, about a hundred and ninety dollars. So typically we tell people that exemption, that basic standard exemption is worth about two hundred dollars. Um, so again, just for your basic, yeah, it goes up based on your age as well. Um, we're often asked as well, what happens to my tax bill? If the property value goes up, however, the millage rate remains the same. And our millage, millage rate has remained the same for the county over the last several years. Um, so in this case, using the same example, property valued at two hundred thousand, it increases by ten percent to two hundred and twenty thousand. So now your fair market value is two hundred and twenty thousand times that forty percent gives you an assessed value of eighty-eight thousand dollars. At eighty-eight thousand times the millage rate of, um, again, twelve point seven three three would give you a, um, a new non-homesteaded value of one thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. So that would, it, um, represent an increase of about a hundred dollars. And again, I say non-homesteaded because if you are already, if your value goes up, but you already have homestead and you already have the, um, frozen provisions already in place. And we'll touch on that in just a moment. So in that case, it would not go up. Uh, you'd be frozen at your, whatever your base, your base, uh, county tax rate was. But bear in mind that the frozen exemption does not apply to school taxes or improvements made to the house or additional land acquired. Um, with that, let me jump quickly into the exemption portion. Several exemptions exist. The most common are, again, your standard L one exemption. Those is for anyone under age sixty-two that owns your home and your home serves as your principal domicile. For the county that represents a five, fifteen thousand dollar deduction. When you reach age sixty-two, additional exemptions kick in, um, principally for the school taxes. Um, so at age sixty-two, it starts and then at age sixty-five, additional exemptions begin for your water millage, which is two mills. It's been the same over the last several years. And again, that increases again at age sixty-eight. And at age seventy, you no longer pay any school taxes. Um, additional exemptions beyond that are disability exemptions, veterans disability exemptions, surviving spouse, armed conflict, surviving spouse, peace officer, firefighter, conservation, freeport, forest land and frozen provision, as I mentioned. The chart on the right gives you a breakdown of what all those exemptions are, how they're quantified and the associated exemption amounts. Um, this presentation will be placed on our website, um, at the conclusion of this presentation. So if anyone wants to go back and revisit that, they'll certainly be welcome to. Um, one thing to bear in mind as relates to the age exemptions, um, you can apply for your L one home extension once you become, take ownership of the home. However, for your age exemption, you must come back into the office and reapply at age sixty-two for your age exemption to come into play. Frozen exemption, we talked about this quite a bit last year. This is, um, um, legislation that went into effect back in two thousand and four. And the, the rationale was it for, back then, as many people know, Henry County was experiencing incredibly dramatic increase in population growth and property value growth. So what was happening was a number of our seniors were, were being priced out of their homes just because of their value of their property was going up. So the commission at the time elected to enact, uh, local legislation that would freeze your county taxes, um, based on your base year. Um, this only includes the primary residence and up to five contiguous acres of land. Um, there's legions of land around that, um, primary residence. And the base year, it's just a little bit confusing. The base year is a taxable year immediately preceding the taxable year in which the exemption is granted to the most recent property owner. Easy way to say that is if you were to apply today, your base year would be twenty twenty. So if you were to apply today, it's after the April first, um, deadline. Um, you'd apply your, your hump that wouldn't apply until twenty twenty, but they would base it on the value of your property from this year. The exemption is automatically renewed from year to year so long as resident occupies the residence as their homestead. Um, the homeowner pays on the base year value of the county and water portions of the tax bill, even if the value increases beyond that base year. Again, that's the benefit of it. Your property may, you may have purchased a property in your base year. It may have been valued at two hundred thousand, but even if it goes up to three hundred thousand on your county taxes, you'd only be paying taxes based on that two hundred thousand dollar number. So as you can see, it takes, it makes a, has a big impact. Um, if the property value does decrease below the base year value, then you would still only pay the lower valuation. One chart we always like to, to show folks, um, as we go forward is just how the tax dollars are, how they're distributed. Um, this gives a, uh, just a quick simple pie chart of where the tax dollars goes. You can see area on the right is your school maintenance and operations that represents about fifty percent of the taxes that, um, that are collected. Um, they've historically been, um, capped at the twenty mills over the last several years. And we don't anticipate that changing this year. The next largest portion would be our county government. And that represents about thirty-seven percent or again, the twelve point seven three three mills that was in place last year. Um, in addition to the twenty mills, the school also has additional three point six two mills that they use for school bonds. This is for items such as building new schools, school improvements, things of that nature. That's also included on your tax bill. Finally, the two mills that attribute toward the water authority. Uh, just briefly, I want to touch on the digest process. Um, the digest itself is a listing of assessments and exemptions consisting of all real and personal property in the county, timber, mobile homes, motor vehicles, heavy duty equipment and public utilities. The digest itself must be approved by the State Department of Revenue before the bills can be mailed out. Those must receive sixty days in advance of the due date. Typically here in Henry County, what we do is we, um, go through the process. The process typically starts in June for us. Um, and it's completed by August. And then that allows us some time to make sure we get the bills printed and mailed out by September first with the due date of November sixteenth. Um, the digest process itself, it's not just my office, it's several offices and entities that are working together. Tax, uh, Tax Assessor's Office really kind of starts the process. Um, they go through on their assessments, they provide that information back to our office. And we compile and consolidate all that information. Um, but we also gather information from the Board of Education, obviously the Board of Commissioners in the setting of the millage, as well as working with each one of the cities. Um, and they provide their information as well. And finally, all that information is, um, sent to and reviewed by the Department of Revenue for their final, final approval. As Vice Chair Clemens mentioned, today is the first meeting, first public hearing of three. Um, we'll be meeting again this afternoon at five o'clock and go through the presentation again and take questions. And again, on August eleventh at six PM for the final public hearing and subsequent adoption of the millage rate. At this time, Vice Chair, I'd be happy to take any questions that, that, um, anyone may have.
Um, first of all, thank you, uh, Commissioner Harris for the presentation. It's, it's clear as it was last year and thank you for being accessible to our citizens who had questions about the millage rate. Um, I want to suggest that we are able to share this, uh, presentation as well on our county website. And Commissioners- And commissioners can share it as well among their constituents for those who missed this and don't understand our millage rate process. So thank you for that. Commissioners, we will ask that the commissioners, if they have any comments first, and then we will go to our public comments. We need to take down the presentation slide.
Okay. Up sharing. There we go.
Commissioner Tom.
My question is about the school board tax. Who determines when that rate increases? Is that done by the Board of Commissioners or the Board of Education? And how many increases do, have they had in the past years that you know about?
Yeah, yeah, good question. So that is determined by the Board of Education. In fact, at ten o'clock, they're having their, their final millage hearing this morning. They have been, they have, they have a maximum millage rate set at 20 mills, and they have been at 20 mills for several years. At least five, six years, they've been at that 20-mill cap. So they cannot go any, any higher beyond that 20-mill cap. So they've been there, so last few years, it's been relatively simple, the process, they've, they've held at the 20-year, at the 20-mill cap. The only other differential is on their bond that they have, and that's 3.62, and that's been in place for several years as well. And that's just to pay for the bond, but their, their maintenance and operation millage is capped, and that's fairly common with most jurisdictions.
Okay. My reason for asking that question, because as stated, your presentation clearly showed that fifty percent plus of the money intake by the county goes directly to the school board. And I wanted to inform the public where they were in the process. And they have maxed out how many, their increases now, and have, as you stated, been there for quite a long time. And a lot of time, people think we're the ones, the Board of Commissioners, have them at that rate and determine how, basically how that money is collected and how it's increased. So thank you so much for that clarification.
Certainly.
Commissioners, have any comments about Commissioner Barn before we go to public comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Barn.
Yes, Michael, great presentation, and I appreciate you focusing a lot on the frozen exception. Because a couple of years back, people really didn't realize about that, and I think it's probably opened up a lot of minds to that process. And one thing that I did want to ask you on the homestead exception, do we advertise that when we send out the notices? Do we, and we may do, but do we send out notices telling people about the homestead exception? And, and what they can do to get that homestead exception?
Yeah, great, great question. We, we actually do, it's actually, it's included on the tax bill itself, there's a statement that's noted on the tax bill. But what we also do is we send out a pamphlet every time we get a new, new homeowners. There's a pamphlet that gets sent to them, we mail out, gosh, a couple hundred a month. And in there, it details out what the exemptions are that are available and the process that one has to go through in order to come into the office, fill out the application, fill out the information, or any contact information they may need. So we make it a point, so as new people are moving into, for new residents, specifically geared towards new residents. So we make sure that gets sent out to all new residents. Once we get that information from the assessor's office, we make sure we go through, we mail out those, again, a couple hundred a month. Every time we find out, we're notified of a new, new resident for that very purpose. So they, to make sure that they can go through the process of making, making them aware of the homestead process and give them directions on how to go about applying. And again, like I said, we also include it on our bills itself. Great question.
We're gonna go to our county manager, I'm assuming that Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Holmes, you're good. Okay, county manager, Sherry.
Thank you, Vice Chair Clemens. Mr. Harris, if you could, just for clarification, I know that the millage rate is a little different than how we've looked at the millage rate. And I think it's a good segue into the presentation that Patrick and I are going to talk through. But could you just explain, I know the board may understand because you sent out a very detailed notice to them. But to the public, what they're going to see in terms of that initial 12.733 millage rate, and then what the base millage rate number is? Because I think maybe some confusion, because it will be advertised, obviously, as a rollback, but it really gets us back to the base number. So could you explain that, just for those that may be viewing this morning, in case there are questions that are being posed?
Sure, and, and at the five o'clock meeting, I can add additional slides, just kind of help give a, give a example of it. So in past years, that 12.733 millage that the county has adopted. That includes all the, and again, governmental services, things such as police, fire, recreation, transportation, roads. Senior services on all those variety of different, different services. It's been lumped into that 12.733, that base, that base number. What the, what the Board of Commissioners is contemplating, the cities are contemplating this year is, is breaking some of those services out and then showing them independently. So in this case, so should the special service district be approved this year? What you'd see as your base county number would be somewhere along the lines of 8.5 mills, as opposed to 12.733, with those other services broken out. So rather than seeing 12.733 for all those services, you'd see a base county millage of 8.5 something. Again, those numbers are still being finalized. And then you'd see a separate millage for police, a separate millage for fire, a separate millage for parks and recreation, a separate millage for planning and zoning and building services. And cumulatively, that would add up to 12.733. So what it does simply is, and again, I applaud the commissioners and the cities for taking this approach. Because it does give citizens a better, a better view of exactly how their services, how the services are broken down. Cumulatively, it'll still add up to the same 12.733. So overall, it does not represent a change in the millage, should the, should the Board of Commissioners choose to stay at 12.733. But it just gives a further breakdown of what's encompassed within that 12.733 millage rate, and it gives you a different, different line items. Now, if you live in one of the incorporated cities, it would show you, again, the base rate for the county millage, as well as any particular services they use. If they use the county police, it would show that county police millage rate. If they use county fire, that county fire millage rate. So it gave a further breakdown of exactly what those, what those numbers would be and represent. And like I said, at this, at five o'clock, I did prepare a slide specifically for the Board of Commissioners. I'll add that to the presentation, just to get, give a, so citizens have a view, an overview of what they're, again, the, the change on the tax bill itself will be, will be minimal. But there will be a slight change showing that SSD, that Special Service District, should the Board choose to move in that direction. And that would be the only variation in the tax bill. And that's how it'd be broken down.
Thank you.
Yep.
I guess that will take us into you, Sherry, and Patrick giving us the Special Service Tax District presentation. Do you want to go there now?
Yes, ma'am, we're ready, sorry, we're having the walk, so bear with us.
Sherry, you want to do the tax district before the public comment, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Clemens, would you like to do public comments first on the millage before we present?
Yeah, let's do that. And we won't do public comments after the Special Service Tax District, I don't want to confuse the two. So let's just do the public comments for the millage right now, Stephanie.
Okay. Vice Chair, we have one citizen who has signed up to speak this morning, it is Vanessa Thomas. And I believe Technology Services is moving her over as a panelist now, so give us one second. And I, she will have three minutes to speak, and I will set the timer.
Thank you.
Ms. Thomas, are you there?
Ms. Thomas, you're on mute.
I can't unmute myself.
You're on mute, go ahead.
Good morning, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Thank you so much for giving, giving us the opportunity to be able to ask questions regarding the millage rate, as, as that will certainly affect the taxes that we pay every year. The question that I had was based on one of the handouts that, or shall I say, the attachments that was enclosed within the agenda. And Mr. Harris did touch on it just a little bit, but he didn't, but he didn't show the, you know, the, the attachment. And so the question I had is based on the 2020 millage rate, and he mentioned about them being broken down. And, you know, and it's also broken down by the unincorporated, as well as the different cities. With me living in the, in the city of McDonough, and in McDonough, I'm looking at the total county millage rate for each, each of our, you know, for, and then it's broken down by the cities. And, and I see where the city, I see where McDonough is paying like maybe, with the county millage rate is like 9.570. But then the city millage rate is 3.806, and that equals to be about 13.376, which is more than the 12.77 that was mentioned, and it looks like it's, it's brought up in the unincorporated. Now, the other cities such as, such as Stockbridge and Hampton and Locust Grove are less than, than the, the total amount that, that the city of McDonough is paying, which is the 13.376. And I was just wondering, why is that? Why is, you know, let's say Locust Grove is at 10.674, and Hampton is at 10.674 as well. Stockbridge is at 12.498, and none of these have any city millage rates attached to it to equal up to the 12.77 or, or higher. So that's my question.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas, I'm gonna let Mr. Harris answer that, but I'm sure it has something to do with the services that those cities receive from the county. But Mr. Harris, I'll let you go ahead and explain that to her.
Yes, Vice Chair, that's correct. And part of it stems back to the fact that you're, you're right, you are going to see slightly higher millage rate in City McDonough, because City McDonough is the only city that has a separate city millage rate. Cities of Stockbridge, Hampton, Locust Grove do not have a separate city millage rate, so that's why you see that distinction. Yeah, so in their special service district, again, and I believe county manager and county attorney will be discussing that a little more in depth in the next, next item. But they have their, they'll still have the county base rate, and they'll still have whatever services that are provided from the county. But they provide their own police, they provide their own planning and zoning services. But they do have a separate line item, 3.806, right. That's, that's the determination that's made by the city of, city of McDonough. I believe when I saw you at the meeting the other day, that's what they were approving, that specific city millage rate. So that's added, so if you live within unincorporated, within, within the incorporated city boundaries, you will also have that additional 3.806 millage rate attached to your tax bill.
Okay, so then in other words, then the other cities, their millage rate is, is, you know, what's, what's stated, like 10.674?
Right. So that's what the. And that would be based on the, the, the base county rate, plus any additional services that they may have. So for instance, in the city of Stockbridge. They are, they have county police, county fire, those are the two of the biggest ones. The county rec, I think there's a general obligation bond that's included as well. So those individual millage rates will also be included on the city of Stockbridge millage rate. In the city of Hampton, city Hampton may have fire, but not police services. So that's what that differentiation is between the millage rate that's specific for the city of, for police, if they don't have, where Stockbridge does have a police millage. The city of Locust Grove, city of Hampton, may not.
Right, I see that. Okay, so it, it looks as though, really, the city of McDonough or McDonough itself is pretty much paying more, more than the 12.77. And really, the other cities are paying much less. Let's say Locust Grove and Hampton are paying like 10.864 and 10.674 for their property taxes.
Yeah, yeah, then keep in mind is, again, the city of, of, those other cities do not have a city.
I understand.
Yep.
I understand, okay, and, and my next question is.
Hold on one second, Ms. Thomas, this is a three-minute person. Ms. Stephanie, can you give us the time on that? Are we over the time? But Ms. Thomas, if your questions are not answered, we will leave time for you to talk to Mr. Harris afterwards, but there was a three-minute limit on the time.
Okay, I'll be back at five o'clock, I can ask it at that time, thank you.
And you don't have to wait until five.
Yeah, Vice Chair, she's certainly welcome to send me an email anytime, and I'd be happy to address her concerns and discuss that with her, and we can go over it again at five o'clock if need be.
Ms. Thomas, we're here for you after the meeting, if you need us, thank you. All right, thank you.
Stephanie, are there any other comments, public comments at this time?
No, that was all Vice Chair.
We want to make sure that our, that we're keeping the time, so that we don't have to cut our constituents off, so make sure that we're keeping up with the time and let them know that they have three minutes. We want to make sure that we follow back up and reach out to her after the meeting to make sure that she's complete with her questions. At this time, we'll go to you, county manager, and our county attorney on the special service tax districts.
Okay, okay, good morning again, Vice Chair and Board. As Mr. Harris has indicated, we are in the process of setting our millage rate, and as part of setting our millage rate, as the board will recall. We have gone through some, some conversations and meetings with our city partners, specifically regarding our service delivery strategy, which is one element of this entire process. What Mr. Joxetter and I are here this morning to do is to, one, answer any questions that the board may have. But to show the board the special service districts that have been identified, so that you all have an idea of what we're looking to do. And then to bring back to the board on August the eleventh, a resolution authorizing us to create the special service districts. As you all know, Mr. Joxetter, I think, has done two presentations to the board outlining the purpose of the special service districts, and specifically what services the county will be responsible for, and what services the respective cities may be responsible for. So this morning, before I jump into the actual maps, I don't know if Mr. Joxetter has any additional information. But we want to show you what those service districts look like. And for those that are viewing with the, for viewing, I want them to also understand how those service districts are created. The one easy way to navigate through this is first identifying which services the county will provide, and then which services will the county provide for the cities that don't have those services available. And so that is, I think, Mr. Joxetter, several months back, or maybe a month ago, went through a very lengthy presentation identifying all of those services. So at this time, I will, let me navigate to our on-screen sharing, and then I'll walk through what those services are.
So good morning, everyone. So what I want to do is walk through a number of maps that might help make clear what we're doing, and I want to give you a little historical context. In the past, what we have done, as Mr. Harris indicated, is we've set a countywide millage rate. It covered the entire county, including areas within the incorporated areas. And we then had a formula that, it was a mathematical formula that rolled back that rate within each of the cities, so that the city residents weren't paying a tax for services that the county did not provide to city residents. What we're doing now is doing it in a more correct manner. What we're doing is going to create service districts. So there are going, you're going to see four service districts. This first one, we've called it General Obligation Service District, there's no magic in the name. But the district consists of the entire county, including the cities, which is why it's shaded in gray, the entire county is shaded in gray. And I'm not going to read through all of the list of services, but they're on the bottom. Essentially, these are countywide funded services. And these services are a little bit different than the SDS presentation I've given to you, and the difference is that, that they're. And the difference is that, that they're, the services listed on this map correspond with your budget categories. So for instance, within this district are things like funding for the, to operate the Board of Commissioners, funding to operate the County Manager's Office, elections, purchasing, tax assessor, the, sort of the services that don't care about city boundaries. It also includes general obligation debt. So that's the services that are covered by a countywide service district. And my understanding, and Mr. Harris will have to correct me, so I don't want to get it wrong, but this millage rate is roughly 8.6? 8.757 is the estimated millage rate right now, and I know that maybe they may still be working on that number. So if everyone within the county, covered by that gray area, will pay 8.77 mills towards these countywide services. And if you hearken back to the SDS presentation, these are the services that I said are funded countywide. So that's the, the first way we go about doing these. Next. So the next service, and these are, these are kind of in random order. The next service is what we're calling our fire service district. So the areas throughout the county shaded in gray are the areas which receive fire protection from Henry County Fire Department. So everywhere, this is the entire county with the exception of the city of McDonough, because they have their own fire department. And everyone in the gray area pays a millage rate towards our fire services. So this would account for a difference between what a McDonough resident and, say, a Hampton resident pays. Because a McDonough resident will not pay a county tax toward fire services. A McDonough resident will pay a city tax towards the city fire services. I already forgot it. The next service we'll show is the police service. And this will likewise account for a differential millage rate among cities. So the gray area, which includes all of the unincorporated area plus the city of Stockbridge, receives served police services through the County Police Department and pays a millage rate. Hampton, McDonough, and Locust Grove provide their own police services, so those residents do not pay a county millage rate towards county police services. So again, that's a, another differential among the cities where McDonough, Locust Grove, and Hampton will pay zero police millage. But Henry County and unincorporated, or Stockbridge and unincorporated areas will pay a millage rate towards police services, which is, do we have an estimate? Roughly 1.824, and I didn't say what the fire millage rate was. And the fire was 1.105 from the previous slide. And the last map are unincorpor, is the unincorporated service district. And this is the area for services that are exclusively provided within the unincorporated area. And there's a list of the services, and if you recall from the presentation, these are the services where all of the cities provide their own, and we do not provide any on behalf of the cities. And it includes GIS mapping, stormwater, waste management, building department, planning and zoning, code enforcement, and community development. So these, this further shows a difference between an unincorporated taxpayer and a municipal taxpayer. And as an unincorporated residence, you would pay a millage rate towards those services. If you live in a city, you would not. And that millage rate, the estimate right now is, we may not have that total, but, but it is, it is a millage rate that would apply only to the unincorporated areas. And it's not going to be very big, because most of these services, I think, are fee, are primarily fee funded. As Matthews and Mr. Smith are trying to see, we may not have that number, we may provide that to you later. But that's essentially how these work is, instead of there being a mathematical formula that we apply to each city, we are instead taking care of this adjustment on the front end with differential millage rates. So we'll, we'll work between now and maybe the next presentation. That wouldn't be the total, because it would be the difference, right? Okay, okay. Right, so, so it's probably going to be about a mill, because we've added up the others. But what we'll do is we'll work with Mr. Harris's office, and we'll, at the later presentation, we'll put the, the estimated millage rate on each one. But that's how it works. We're taking care of the old rollback formula on the front end by assessing a different millage rate. So the tax bills will actually reflect, reflect different millage rates for different services. And again, we'll work with Mr. Harris and his staff to make sure that the, the bills are such that they're understandable. And, and it would help, I think, to see these graphics, but obviously the bill doesn't have room for all of these graphics. So that's the, that's the presentation. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Can you take your screen down, Patrick? Thank you. Commissioners, do you all have any questions about the special tax district presentation?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Commissioner Thomas.
When you were talking about the special districts, I didn't hear you say anything in reference to, excuse me, I'm trying to find my video, I can't find it anywhere. In reference to parks and recreations, road maintenance and upkeep, would that be another special area, or would that be, is that included in one of the descriptors, descriptors that you've already defined?
Commissioner Thomas, that's actually included in one of the descriptors. It's going to be under that general obligation service district, which is where every taxpayer would be included within that respective amount. So that would be under, let's see, yeah, park areas, roads, that's going to be under the first slot that Patrick went over.
Okay. The next question would be, if we are going to do these special service districts, does that? Does that?
Commissioner Thomas, we can't hear you. Commissioner Thomas, we can't hear you.
Okay, thank you. I, I was punching the button, but it still didn't work. But anyway, my question is, if we're going to create these special districts and define what they are by city and by areas, does that now replace trying to have a one package service delivery for everyone?
So we will still have to have a service delivery strategies agreement. This will not replace the service delivery strategies agreement, this goes hand in hand with. So if you remember the, the presentation that I made on SDS, where I put up all of those Department of Revenue or Department of Community Affairs forms, each one of those forms falls into one of these maps. So the, the service delivery strategies agreement actually is what we use to create our service districts, and our service districts are what we use to perform under our service delivery agreement. So they go, they really do go hand in hand. But, but each city, each, for the most part, the, the agreement with the cities is the same, except for Hampton, I'm sorry, McDonough and police services, or I'm sorry, Stockbridge and police services and McDonough and fire services. For the most part, beyond that, we do have one agreement, but we have a little bit of a different agreement. The, the agreement will look different for McDonough with respect to their fire and Stockbridge with respect to police.
So does that mean at this point in time, we will have a service delivery agreement by the next board meeting?
We, we are hopeful that we will. And if we refer to the next board meeting as the, as the August 18th meeting is possible. I would say more likely the first meeting in September, simply because of scheduling, because we're already working on that August 18th agenda. But we are down to a couple of detailed issues on the service delivery, but they won't affect the creation of the service districts. We're still going to create the service districts the way we presented.
I am thinking about the services that we provide, and I'm thinking about the different cities and what they bring to the table as well. And I'm assuming you've created these districts understanding that they have to bring a certain thing, certain things to the table as well to get this service delivery finalized, regardless whether they're districts or whatever.
If, if, let me make sure I understand you correctly, Commissioner Thomas. So I, I certainly believe that the service districts that we are proposing is in line with what we, as well as the city managers and administrators, have agreed to in terms of services that we will provide versus services that they will be able to provide, which is why it's just a small number of services. I do believe that there's still a couple of things that we've got to work out in terms of, and we've talked about it with the board before, roads specifically. But the creation of the service districts would have no bearing on us finalizing the SDS. The need to go ahead and create the service districts is because of the presentation that Mr. Harris made earlier this morning regarding the setting of the millage rate. He needs to know what that millage rate is going to be. And because we're looking to create the special service districts, we need to go ahead and proceed with that creation so that he can proceed with making sure that the tax bills go out with the right information. So I'm not sure if I answered your question. If I didn't, please pose it again, and let me see if I can try to answer it again. But I'm comfortable that the police services and the fire services, those are two service districts that I can tell you haven't changed. McDonough provides their own fire services, so that will automatically be a fire service district. None of the cities have fire services, so they cannot provide that service to their residents. The city of Stockbridge does not have a police department, so we will have to continue providing the police services to the city of Stockbridge, while the other cities do have police departments. So we are comfortable that those are two services that we will continue to provide if approved by the board. And the other general obligation, the general operation of county government, that will be a service district, as all of the residents will pay for those services.
So in the instance, and I know and I hear you saying like Hampton has their own police, and so does Locust Grove and McDonough. But there are times we have to support their services. How are you managing that? Would that be by some type of memorandum of understanding? That rate is already set, they pay it every month, they pay it as needed. How is that going to be managed with this creation of these special districts?
Very clear, thank you. And so we will have what we call mutual aid agreements, and I'm looking at, we confirm, we will have mutual aid agreements in place with all of our four cities. And so that will be a part of the SDS. So for a number of services that we provide, there are also separate agreements that go along with those special services. For example, the board, when we had our first meeting with all of the cities back here, I guess about maybe nine, 10 months ago, we decided, or at least the board decided, that for recreational and specifically for parks, that those parks that are located within city boundaries, although located within city boundaries, if they're active parks, we will continue to operate and maintain those parks. And so we will have separate agreements that are in place with those specific, within the, the agreement. But in terms of police services, we don't charge the cities anything beyond this millage rate that is assessed to the taxpayers. If you'll recall, we did talk with the board when we had our joint meeting with the cities regarding maybe assessing some additional fees for special operations, for services beyond just your normal mutual aid, and I believe the will of the board at that time was for us not to consider adding any additional assessment or any additional cost to the respective cities. I'm going to tell Brad to come up in case I've misspoken, because I know he's worked on the public safety piece. But I, I think that is my recollection of, of what, what comments were made by the board.
And my question about that would be, County Manager, in lieu of doing something of that nature, and you mentioned roads and maintenance and what have you, somewhere along the line, there needs to be a balance. If we're not going to charge for these other incidentals, I'll just call them for the moment, then they need to absorb some of the road costs and road maintenance in their area to help offset some of the costs that we're going to be absorbing.
So Commissioner Thomas, I think Patrick's coming up, he wants to jump in, because we've been talking about roads.
Yeah, and, and Commissioner, you're correct, and I don't mean to interrupt Sherri, but the roads maintenance issue is one of them that we're still working on. We're still working on finalizing what that agreement's going to look like. And the way that we're envisioning that agreement right now is that countywide, there's a countywide tax for road maintenance. And that countywide tax is paid into the county treasury, and we will maintain unincorporated roads out of that. Now, we, we are contemplating a payment to cities out of that countywide tax, which represents a pro-rata amount of road miles. So if, if the city of, if one of the cities has 3% of the road miles, we're going to give them 3% of the tax, the ad valorem tax funded road maintenance, and they will maintain their own roads. If the road's located within the city, they will maintain it. So we are ensuring that countywide residents are paying to maintain every single road in the county. But we aren't going to maintain city roads within the city limits. We're going to leave that to the cities. But they will have an opportunity to share with, with the tax revenue, because it's just easier that way than creating yet another service district and having, you know, shifting all of the burden onto one taxpayer or the other. And keep in mind that what this is about is about the taxpayers, what taxpayer pays, not whether the city itself pays. Because there's no instance under SDS where, where cities pay money to the county. We, we simply, if they want to buy a service from, from us, we'll sell them the service. But with respect to road maintenance, we are ensuring that that obligation is spread out among all residents, including city residents, to help fund county roads. So that is, we have, we have captured that in the proposal. Now, I cannot tell you that that proposal has, is 100% accepted. That's the proposal that we've been made, we're working on some of the details on that proposal. But that does, as we view it, that does adequately share that responsibility and ensure that the cities, both, city residents both contribute to the county roads that they use, but also provide, ensure that we're not going to be on the hook for maintaining city roads. Because that's something I don't think anybody wants. I don't think the cities want us maintaining all their roads, and we certainly don't want to be maintained.
Okay, does that proposal also include then, if indeed the cities decide to annex in a particular area, and the county road runs directly in it, are you annexing in also the road and the responsibility when you annex in an area? So that we won't be left with, and often they say it, but that's county road. Now, you own all the land, not own it, but you annex in all the land around it, but you want us to maintain as a county road. So have you put all that in your encapsulation in your special design districts?
Yes, so with respect to roads, Georgia law already provides that when the city annexes on both sides of a road, that road becomes a city road. And so we're defining city roads versus county roads in accordance with that law. So it is captured, it is captured from that way. So, but that does create, you know, that does create some unique problems that we will have to deal with, probably a little bit on a case by case basis, because we have roads sometimes that are splosh builds, that may be within a city. And, you know, there's little things like that that will come up, that our agreement doesn't mean we're going to quit talking to the cities and working out how to handle these roads that are, that benefit all of us. So there will still be a significant amount of work that the County Manager and her staff will do in coordinating with the cities over some of these roads that are, go in the city, out of the city, into the city. You know, you don't want, you don't want either jurisdiction to, to do a massive resurfacing project and have it stop for half a mile and then start up again and start again. So we're not putting anything in the agreement that prohibits us from continuing to work with cities on those issues.
Mr. Thomas, are you clear?
I am, I am very interested in seeing the final agreement, because we want to make sure as we're protecting county funds and using them as best as possible. Because citizens don't know where boundaries start and where boundaries end. I've got one on my desk now that I'm dealing with. Who, who, this is a city, who's the county, who owns the road, who owns the land? It's a mess. And if we're going to create new special service districts, we need to make sure the language is very explicit in what we're covering and what that definitely. we need to make sure the language is very explicit in what we're covering and what that definition will be. That's all I'm saying, not leaving no holes where people go, that's not covered, this is covered, that's not covered. But make it very, encapsulize everything so it's done correctly.
And each year, Commissioner, if, if during, after you approve the special service districts and if during the next year there's an annexation, then the special service district will follow the annexation. So if the, if the city boundaries grow or for some reason they shrunk, the service district will grow and or shrink with the city boundary line. So that's the nature, that's the reason these work. These service districts work because they take into account the fact that the city might grow. We don't have to have an agreement about the 150 feet of property at the edge of the city because the city by definition will either expand or shrink with its annexations or de-annexations. So it's, it's taken care of in the manner in which annexations.
Thank you.
And I would just like to encourage you, Patrick and Sherri, that when you're looking at this, that you remember and keep in mind our citizens, that although there are city roads, all citizens are county citizens. And so I don't want us not to fix roads or have issues with roads because they're in the city limits because at the end of the day, everybody that drives the road is a county resident. So no one suffers but our residents when roads aren't fixed. So we really need to figure out, you know, whether we're charging the cities for the taxes that they collect for the roads and we put it all in one pot, one department fixes it, or if we give them their money and then they're responsible. But at the end of the day, we've got to make sure that every road in Henry County, whether it's incorporated or unincorporated, is fixed. Citizens are going to call it the county because they're county residents. All residents are not city residents, but all residents are county residents. So I think it ultimately falls back on the county, and we need to figure that out. So that's my encouragement when we're dealing with the service tax districts, to have a deep conversation with the cities and just let, let it be clear who's going to repair those roads and where the money is coming from.
Absolutely. Commissioner Clemens, for those that are viewing, you're absolutely right in terms of making sure that all of the roads are taken care of because we do get the phone calls regardless of where they lie. What I want the board to also understand is that our DOT, or at least the ad valorem taxes that we collect, a very small portion of that goes to our DOT. And so we are so dependent on our splosh or any other funding that may come in from state or federal levels. So that's one of the things that we want to make sure that the funding that we're collecting, that we are putting it back into the road projects. And one of the things that we've talked to the other cities about are joint projects where we can go in jointly and make the necessary improvements. I assure you, if there's an issue on a road, and we had an issue about a couple of weeks ago where a deer was on the side of the road, then fall within the unincorporated boundaries, but our DOT department went out and picked it up. That's, that's what we need to do. We need to make sure that we are providing services to all of the residents. One of the reasons we wanted to focus on these special service districts is because we wanted to make sure that we were being equitable and fair to the residents because there's been a concern that unincorporated residents are, and I hate to say subsidizing, but subsidizing the city residents and vice versa. And so hopefully this will take care of it. But I hear you, we will continue to work with the cities to make sure that our roads are improved and indefinitely focus more on making sure that we are putting the necessary dollars into our DOT budget to make sure that we can make some of these necessary improvements. Because a lot of things are going on, and I know you've gotten a lot of calls recently regarding potholes and sidewalks. And so we're, we're really trying to work to make sure we get all that resolved. So, so noted, and we'll definitely continue to work with the cities.
County Manager, one other question. We collect road monies from the federal government for DOT. Now, do we collect those funds also for the city? Or we only collecting them from unincorporated? Because I know we had a discussion before about the monies that we collect for the cities, giving that money to the cities so that the cities can maintain their roads. But if the county is actually getting the calls, I'm wondering, you know, we may need to talk about, is the county, if you're getting the money, do you just fix roads? Because when the cities get the money, I don't know that they're required to use it on the road. So just talk a little bit about that and how we can better service our county with those funds.
So we have different pots of money. As I mentioned, we have our splosh allocation, but then we have federal dollars that come down after we have federal projects that are approved, state or the Atlanta Regional Commission. And so that's one pot. The monies that you're talking about specifically are those state LMIC dollars. So Henry County receives a certain pot of money or a pot of money based on our lane mileage for unincorporated road mileage. The cities also receive LMIC funding for lane mileage that they actually, for roads that fall within the cities. We don't get that money, we don't have any control over how they spend that money. And so we even talked about that as we navigated through SDS. And that's really the proposal that we presented back to the cities. If you all are collecting LMIC dollars for these roads, then the state will not give those funds to us. You all need to make sure that you're maintaining the roads, that you're collecting LMIC dollars on. And so I think that's where we're, we're kind of going back and forth. And I don't think they, and I hate to speak for the cities without being here, I don't think they disagree with the approach, but I think they are definitely looking for some commitments from the county in terms of what we're going to pay back to them based on their city's light road mileage. So you are correct in terms of those monies that come from the state to the cities, that is wholeheartedly controlled by the cities. We don't know what projects they're doing, that is strictly under their previe. And then for the county, we do receive our funding, which we meet with each commissioner and identify some critical road projects within your respective district. So that's the LMIC, splosh, and then any federal funding. And then again, the ad valorem taxes that we're collecting, of the total amount, a very small portion does go back to our DOT budget.
Well, I would encourage you that the funds that we collect, that we give back to the city for their roads, that those funds are used as a match to a project that they've identified that they're going to use for the LMIC funds that they have. If not, then we would have to hold those funds to do what we need to do when we're called about city project roads that we can do. That way, we know that we're spending the money and we're being fiduciary responsible for the funds that are coming in and making sure that they go towards roads.
Okay, I'll make sure county attorney relays that to the cities.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes, this is a question for Patrick. He, he insinuated that if the city owns the road on both sides of the road, it becomes city property. But we have a lot of annexions that come into the city throughout the whole county, and, and it looks like we're responsible. Can that be part of the process that people cannot get annexed unless they agree to fund one side of the road and we fund the other side of the road? Just wondering about that.
Well, I, I don't think you could, but we don't have any control over an individual proposing to annex property. The only, the only voice the county has in a proposed annexation is if it is accompanied by a change in land use. So if a property owner wants to annex into the city of McDonough, for example, and they're not changing the rezoning, there, there's, the county has no, we have no role whatsoever in that. So we could certainly, as, if there are changes in land use accompanying a rezoning, we could certainly engage in that discussion. There are probably, well, in fact, there, there are problems with shifting the obligation to maintain existing roads onto specific property owners. So that would be problematic, but that's certainly something we can work through when we have annexations that are accompanied by land use changes. You know, if you think back to the times we've made objections as to those annexations, and that triggers sort of a negotiation process, the maintenance of roads or the obligation, responsibility to take care of the roads could become one of the factors that we enter, entered in negotiations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, Vice Chair, or myself, or Patrick?
Questions are clear on that, we can move on to the next item, agenda item. Are you good, Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Holmes? Okay, we're going to move on to our next agenda item. Thank you, Sherri and Patrick, for the presentation. We'll hear more about that. I guess you guys will present more about the special tax districts this evening. And I guess at some point, we will have to take a vote on that. We're moving on to risk management. Holly, are you ready for your presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Go ahead, Holly.
We're trying to share.
We're working on it, ma'am.
Thank you, dear.
There we go. Good morning, Vice Chair and Commissioners. Wanted to bring this RFP to you today. Risk management has found that the county's been a little remiss with collecting some funds that we believe that we can get using this company. Sometimes we'll have stop signs, guardrails, other county property that RIS doesn't even know was damaged in a vehicle crash until much later. And then it's very hard to find out the responsible parties, the at-fault person, to go after their insurance to collect. This company comes in, it's a completely hands-free system, which means that no county employee has to be involved in it. They have access to the police databases throughout the different cities, the county, as well as state patrol, and they keep a small percentage and send us the rest. This is just a little overview. Again, the county will receive 82% of all the things that are collected. And Peace Recovery Services is the company that was chosen through purchasing. We went through the RFP process. Any questions?
Holly, I, I am so glad to see this. We've been needing this for a very long time. They don't charge us anything and they collect the funding for us. So this is a really good program and project. I'm glad to see that you got on top of this.
And a little technical issues. Just a moment. Is there any questions that I can answer?
Okay, if there's no questions or answers, I would like to, at this call, at this time, call for a vote to approve this RFP. I have a motion by Commissioner Holmes. A second by Commissioner Baum. We'll call roll for a vote Johnny Wilson, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Holmes and Commissioner Baum, and I vote Stephanie, thank you.
Thank you, board.
We'll call up emergency management at this time for resolution of paying the renewal of the Elton Harris radio system maintenance agreement. Don Ash, please.
Good morning again, Vice Chair Wood and Vice Chair Clemens and Commissioners. Thank you this morning. This is just a renewal agreement for the legacy equipment that's a part of our radio system that came over, that is not a part of the regular warranty equipment. It includes our infrastructure buildings and resources. This is a normal renewal agreement with Harris, L3 Harris, and it is budgeted in our department's budget for this year.
Commissioners, do you have any questions in reference to this approval? So we'll take a vote at this time, District 1, District 2, it's a, yes, District 3, 4, 5. Okay, so we first entertain the motion to approve. The motion's made by Commissioner Wilson, approved by Commissioner Thomas. It's five to, five, Stephanie.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Commissioners, have a great Monday.
Human Resources? Do we have Harold on the line for Human Resources?
Good morning, Vice Chair, Distinguished Board Members. We're about to present the PowerPoint now.
Thank you.
Good morning again. Today, we're presenting the resolution for the amendment to the master service agreement between Henry County and Health Stat. As you all know, 14 months ago, we embarked on the Henry Care Wellness Center, and we looked at that center as being a holistic center for our employees. This amendment expands the scopes of service for our Henry Care Wellness Center. And in particular, it deals with occupational health services. And to drill down even further, our pre-employment health screenings, we'll be able, we'll be able to facilitate them now at the Henry Care Wellness Center. Also, with this amendment, we're afforded the opportunity to add a nurse practitioner and a medical office assistant. And I think all of you have been to the Henry Care Wellness Center. And Tashnia Burgess, as well as Vasini Shula have done a tremendous job thus far. In addition, we'll be able to extend the hours of operation for our Henry Care Wellness Center. When we talk about the hours of operation, technically, right now, we're working at 30 hours. With the amended agreement, we'll be able to work 51 hours and have Mondays open for 10 hours, Tuesday 11 hours, Wednesday 10 hours, Thursday 10 hours, Friday and Saturday, 5 hours apiece. And those are two additional days we're adding. So we're going from a four-day operational work week to a six-day operational work week. And when we talk about Monday and Tuesdays, when we look at our activity reports, they're still the high-frequency days in terms of our appointments. When we looked at our June activity report, we saw we had 44 appointments on Mondays and 35 appointments on Tuesdays. And then when we look at the rolling calendar year, we had 563 appointments on Mondays and 485 appointments on Tuesdays. That makes up roughly 54% of our appointments in total. When we look at our occupational health services, and in particular, our pre-employment screening, you see the total cost of pre-employment physicals averaged $102,219 in the years of 2018 and 2019. In 2018, we spent $114,000 alone in pre-employment health screenings. And in 2019, we spent over $93,000. So this amendment will produce a projected cost savings of 83% in employment health screenings in terms of our pre-employment screen. So we presented this amendment, this resolution today for your approval because we think, one, it's a win-win for Henry County, and more importantly, our employees. Do we have any questions at this time?
Yes, would you, would you take the presentation down for a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's better for me to be able to see the Commissioners that have questions. I'll start with, I don't know if the other Commissioner's going to ask this question, but I know that there is an increase by a little over $1,000, close to $2,000 increase. And are those funds coming out of fund balance or were they budgeted in our budget that we passed? So that's a question that we need to know because I see that you're adding a nurse practitioner. And are we responsible for, when we add that person, are they becoming a payroll person for the company? And are we having to take care of their benefits? Or is this just an additional that we're spending to Health Stat? And I'll let you answer it at the end of all questions for all Commissioners. Any other Commissioners have questions? Commissioner Thomas?
Okay, I have had a conversation with our County Manager and Deputy County Manager about also adding, again, something there for mental care, personal care, spiritual care, whatever you want to call it, brain health, because of the fact so many of our employees need it. And we definitely know in the realm of our public safety, families, members need it a lot, especially the wives and their children have some type of group outlets to talk to. And I'm not talking about adding additional costs. I'm just simply saying, put a provider there. If maybe two days Kaiser can be there and two days Cigna can be there. And they're using their, their insurance to pay for the services. We're just making it convenient for them to have the services available. So it shouldn't be an additional cost to us as the Board of Commissioners at all. So I certainly hope you So I certainly hope you will look in that as you're adding these other things to this area. I've been to the facility, I love going there, it helps a lot, it's very convenient, but it would be so great, especially in these pressing times, for some of our, some of our public safety family members to maybe have an outlet to talk about what they're struggling with as they try to represent us. And in a growing county, in a county that's in a little turmoil, in a world that's in turmoil, and when we're questioning, we're questioning the integrity and sometime that the work of our police force around us, they need an outlet. So I'm certainly hope that you can look into finding a way to put some type of group services there, or family services there, personal care, self-care, a better me. I call it a better me because an opportunity to go and find out more about me in this facility as well. So please consider that and work with our County Manager and Deputy County Manager to make this happen. I know I've made this plea about three or four times now. I think it needs to happen.
It has not gone on deaf ears. In fact, we're in collaboration right now with Kaiser, as well as Cigna, to do some fireside chats to address mental health issues. We're working that through Epic and Mike Gass as well. So you be on the lookout for communications real soon in reference to that.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioners have comments? Commissioner Wilson?
Okay, I'm muted, correct? I want to say thank you, Mr. Cooper, for working this to, getting us up to this level. And I think when we approved to put the clinic in place, and we, we looked at improving the levels and, and with the cost savings, so all the things that we talked about before proven, the clinic have, are following in play. So we had the savings on the county side, we've got the savings for the employee sides, and now we move to the next level for the hours of operation. So good job to you and your staff.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir.
All Commissioners are clear? So at this time, we would like to entertain a motion to accept the agenda item for approval. We have a motion by Commissioner Gearbaum, second by Johnny Wilson, Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Holmes, all in favor. Stephanie, it's all in favor with a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. We're moving on to our community development agenda item. Agenda item twelve. Thank you, Shannon Sanio.
Good morning, Vice Chair and members of the Board. If you all will give us just one moment, we're gonna change out the PowerPoint presentation. Good morning again, and thank you, thank you for your patience. This morning, we this morning, we are presenting before you an agreement for the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. This is in response to RFP twenty forty-four. The county did post an invitation to bid in May of this year for a developer to manage the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Funds for the rehabilitation, redevelopment, and resale of vacant properties and foreclosed homes within the county. Proposals were due late June. Two proposals were received. Southern Crescent Habitat for Humanity, Inc., was the only responder to meet all of the requirements. Of the two proposals received, they were scored by an evaluation committee of five. Southern Crescent Habitat for Humanity of Jonesboro, Georgia, received the highest score, and the evaluation committee recommends awarding the contract to them. This award is proposed on as an annual service agreement for one year with a two-year possible mutual agreed-upon renewal. On the screen now, you will see the evaluation results. There was a maximum total point of five seventy-five possible. Our second bidder was Jewel of the South of Conyers, Georgia. The committee scored them with a total of four-ten. Southern Crescent Habitat for Humanity, for Humanity of Jonesboro, Georgia, totaled four forty-six. Proposals were reviewed based on qualifications, experience, and references, understanding of the approach for the project, cost proposals, and interviews. The objective, as we are entering into the final phase of with our Neighborhood Stabilization Programs, Habitat will be responsible for assessing properties and working with a community development rehab advisor on the development of a scope of work and budget. For cost efficiency, Habitat will utilize volunteers as much as possible, and will procure contractors in compliance with local and federal regulations when specialty trades are required. All properties sought, acquired, and redeveloped will be available for resale and occupancy of households at or below fifty percent of our area median income. This is a requirement to ensure our LH twenty-five component of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Specifically, this requirement means that twenty-five percent of all NSP funds, that is program funds, as well as program income, be expended to benefit low and extremely low-income households. At this time, I will accept any questions.
Shannon, if you would take the presentation down, I will be able to see the Commissioners.
Yes, ma'am. Tech Services is assisting with that as we speak. Thank you.
Commissioner comments at this time? Commissioner Thomas, I can't see you. Okay, hearing none and seeing none, we will, at this time, entertain the motion to approve this resolution. Moved by Commissioner Thomas. Second by Commissioner Holmes. Commissioner Wilson, your vote. Commissioner Barm. Stephanie, the resolution passes five to a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The second part of Ms. Sanio's presentation is a public hearing. Would you proceed, please?
Yes, ma'am. As we speak, Tech Services is assisting with changing out the PowerPoint. Thank you. This is a public hearing. We are seeking to receive public comments on the proposed FY twenty through twenty-twenty-four Consolidated Plan, as well as the FY twenty-twenty Annual Action Plan, for consideration of approval for the proposed plans and the priorities established within for the Community Development Block Grant Program, and to advise the Chair to execute related documents for submitted to staff. As you all are aware, as you all are aware, Henry County receives Community Development Block Grant Program Funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. As a recipient of these entitlement funds, Henry County is required to periodically provide updates to the Consolidated Plan, which describes housing, homelessness, and community development needs and strategies for providing CDBG assistance for improvements. Additionally, on an annual basis, we are required to submit our annual allocate, or, excuse me, annual action plan, which specifies how we intend to utilize those funds. The Consolidated Plan takes in consideration demographics and income limits of Henry County residents and the conditions of local housing stocks and the cost of housing. The action plan describes specific projects in which the county proposes to utilize CDBG funds to carry out those priorities of the Consolidated Plan. It also provides an evaluation and update of previous program years' funding and activities. Due to COVID nineteen, only five of the ten scheduled needs assessment meetings were held. We began these meetings in February, and as you all are aware, many of our public facilities closed in March. Staff, in addition to those public meetings, staff did email needs assessment surveys or questionnaires to state and local government entities, departments, nonprofits, advocacy groups, and health and human service providers. These surveys serve together data on the missions, populations served, and unmet needs of each entity, and that of their client base. On June ninth, HUD announces twenty-twenty funding allocations, advising the county of its eligibility to receive one million one hundred ninety-seven dollars, ninety-seven thousand dollars for FY twenty-twenty. In addition to the anticipated annual CDBG allocation, the proposed plan also includes a special allocation of CDBG funds known as CV one, in the amount of seven hundred and four thousand dollars, to be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus, commonly known as COVID nineteen. This allocation was authorized by the Coronavirus Aid Relief in Economic, economic, excuse me, Securities Act, commonly known as CARES. On the PowerPoint presentation, you will see specifically how we propose to utilize the regular year twenty-twenty CDBG funding of just over one point one million dollars. We are recommending approximately eight hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars be utilized for public facility and infrastructure improvements. This includes street improvements, sidewalks, water and sewer improvements, improvements to public housing units, the rehabilitation of single-family homes. Additionally, we are proposing a hundred and ten thousand dollars to assist with public services. This includes services for abused and neglected children, youth services, services for abused and battered spouses, health services. And as you all are aware, the grant also provides for salary and other administrative calls for staff and equipment and supplies. That has also been budgeted within our proposal. For the funding for CARES, we are proposing one public facility improvement for homeless shelter. We are proposing fifty thousand dollars for that activity. We are proposing two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for public services, specifically subsistence payments. This would include utility, rent, and mortgage assistance, employment training to help individuals gain new skills to return into the workplace, as well as health services. To assist businesses directly impacted by COVID, we are proposing a micro enterprise assistance at a total of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. This is anticipated to award fifty-five grants at five thousand dollars each. Additionally, funding is allocated in this award to assist with the cost of staff and supplies at a hundred and forty thousand dollars. I can definitely go back to any slide with the proposed funding, but I can take any questions you have at this time.
Shannon, thank you for that presentation, and I'm so excited about the micro enterprise grant. You know, it's been three years, we've been talking about that, and to see that to come into full fruition, not knowing that COVID nineteen would be here and that our communities would be able to benefit from this. So this is huge. I would like to see you put out some information about how businesses can apply for those funds that are coming from CDBG, and if there are stipulations of that businesses have to meet in order to qualify for the micro enterprise grants. Two hundred and seventy-five thousand is a lot, and I know it may not be enough to keep our businesses afloat, but at least the small businesses in our community will have something they can apply for to help during the COVID nineteen. So please get that package out to us, please email it to all of the Commissioners so that we can share it with the business communities of all the qualifications for those funds.
We definitely will upon approval from HUD. Once they receive and review and approve the documentation, we will definitely get that information out to each of you.
Can you give us a timeframe on when you will submit to HUD and when HUD will get back with us on the approval?
Yes, ma'am. We will be finalizing the document over the next week. It will be to HUD no later than August fourteenth. HUD has a maximum of forty-five days to review and respond.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas, you had a question, and then other Commissioners, let us know if you have comments about the presentation. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the CDB.
Excuse me. Before you
A public hearing, public hearing.
This is a public hearing. We did advertise as required, including the WebEx instructions. We did not receive via email any requests, but we will announce at this time this is a public hearing.
So in order to comply with federal regulations, we want to make sure that this is clear, that this is a public hearing for the CDBG funds. At this time, there were no comments, no sign-ups for it, but we want to make sure that we put on record that we did comply with the regulations of the federal government of having a public hearing. Is that sufficient, Shannon, for your process?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will entertain a motion to approve the resolution to receive the proposed Annual Action Plan for our CDBG funds. We have a motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Barm, Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Holmes. Stephanie, it will be five with a unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move into item thirteen, which is our, let's go to SLOSS and give Commissioner, give Sherry, excuse me, and Patrick an opportunity to prepare for our financials. So at this time, we will move to our SLOSS presentation. We'll ask Rocky to come and present us with the SLOSS resolutions, and we'll go through the SLOSS and Sherry, that'll give you guys plenty of time to get prepared for the finance.
Thank you, Vice Chair Clemmons. Just one thing on the item Rocky is getting ready to present. This is a mission five, Commissioner Holmes. We're just gonna add one statement, that if the Board approves it, it's gonna be subject to the issuance of the SLOSS funds, because that's what we're waiting on. So we don't want to hold it up, and we'll just put that catch on, and then once the bonds are issued, Rocky's good to go, and we don't have to bring it back to the Board. So I just want to add that to what Rocky's gonna present.
Okay, so Rocky needs to either state it in the records, and Commissioner Holmes, when you get ready to make the motion, make sure that you add it on there, please.
Yes, ma'am. Very good. Thank you.
Good morning, Vice Chair and Board Members. Morning. So this is for the West Village, for the approval of the bid construction. West Village Parkway, Panola Road is an approved District Five, SLOSS Four and SLOSS Five Transportation Project. Seal bids were solicited through the Purchasing Department. Twelve seal bids were received and reviewed. The lowest bid is six million four hundred seventy-two thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars from CW Matthews Contract. The project goes all the way from, just from outside the county line into Clayton, where the Clayton Project ends, four lane to two, all the way to Fervview. We're gonna be widening as a four-lane road, and it's also gonna have landscaping and lighting as well. Staff recommends awarding the bid number twenty dash forty-eight for the construction of the widening of West Village Parkway, Panola Road, to CW Matthews Contract on the amount stated before. As well, as Sherry mentioned, this, this resolution will also, needs to be amended to mention that this will be contingent upon the, upon approval, that hopefully will get approved this afternoon. I will take any questions at this time.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioners, any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Wilson. Unmute yourself.
I guess my question would be, should we table this until we get the approval through the bond approval?
Commissioner Wilson, we're going to add in the resolution that is contingent on the bond approval.
Well, I had questions about the bond as well, but I don't know if this is an appropriate time to bring it up because of the mountain and how them funds are distributed throughout the cities. Anyway, I think, that's just my question, if we think we should probably go through the bond process before we get into this. Anyway, that's all we got.
Commissioner Wilson, if the bond is not approved, this project will be dead. So it'll be contingent on that. But I mean, I just wanted to clarify that with you.
And Vice Chair Clemens and Commissioner Wilson, there is also funding already available in SLOSS 4 that Rocky can proceed with on this project. So this is just balance to complete the project. So he does have enough funding available now to begin the project.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the bid award for the District 5 widening of West Village Parkway.
I would like to move to approve this project contingent on the approval of the bonding.
We have a second by Commissioner Thomas, all in favor, Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Baum. Stephanie, it is approved with five unanimous votes.
Thank you.
Rocky?
Yes, Vice Chair. The next presentation is going to be also related to the West Village Parkway. And it's in regards with the reimbursement agreement with Snapping Shoals EMC. As part of the project, we're going to have to relocate utilities, this is one of them. In the September 1st meeting, I'll be bringing the Water Authority as well, but this one is for Snapping Shoals EMC. As mentioned before, it is SLOSS 4, and we do have funding available there. And then SLOSS 5 will be using the remaining that we need for the project on SLOSS 5. So due to the construction, we are in need of replacing or relocating some utilities, like Snapping Shoals, for this one, Snapping Shoals EMC, the power. Snapping Shoals has estimated a relocation cost of $101,851.42. And as mentioned before, we do have funding for this relocation in the project budget on SLOSS 4. I'll take any questions.
Floor is open for questions from commissioners. At this time, we will entertain a motion to approve this resolution, approving the installation and the reallocation and removing of the lighting of West Village Parkway.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Holmes, second by Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Baum, and Commissioner Wilson, we need your vote. Stephanie, we have a five-zero with a unanimous approval.
Thank you.
And the final resolution, Rocky?
The final relating the West Village Parkway is going to be for the lighting. Just waiting to be uploaded. Again, this is also for West Village. This is for Snapping Shoals EMC, for them to do the installation of the lighting, including the wires, poles, conduit, and labor, the amount of $1,287.77 per month for a total of 120 payments. This will not happen until after construction is done, but we just want to bring this up at this time. The county will be paying that monthly cost for the installation, for the maintenance and the energy. So if anything happens, if a pole gets hit or power is lost, Snapping Shoals will be out there fixing, maintaining it. Funding is available in the monthly cost in the Henry County DOT's street lighting account. I'll take any questions at this time.
Rocky, with this one, this is exactly what we were trying to do with the Jonesboro Road. I think Commissioner Thomas has put Rock Quarry and Campground as well for street lightings, and Commissioner Wilson said once before, if we're going to do one streetlights, we need to do all. So I would like to add, Commissioner Thomas, I'll let you add yours on your own, but I would like to add Jonesboro Road to the street lighting plan for this. And Commissioner Wilson and Baum, if you guys have one, this is the time to add it.
Thank you, Commissioner. We definitely want to make sure that we are including in this main areas that need life support in these heavy traffic areas in our district, and that's what we're concerned about, these heavy traffic areas where people are commuting a lot on foot these days and a lot on bicycles as the children are trying to get around, and now that COVID has changed a lot and people are moving about, especially our children. So I definitely want to add the Rock Quarry area on to this and the Campground extension area to this plan as well.
Vice Chair, if I may, this is specific for this project and a specific amount that the county will be paying by month. Each road should have, and it also depends, we have three different providers. So this is specific with Snapping Shoals, not sure if the other areas, if it'd be Georgia Power or Central EMC, but this is specific for the West Village.
But this is specifically for the constituents and the community with these dark roads that we have. I don't think that we need to do one and not do the other, so we're okay with this one being Snapping Shoals, but we need to add a line item to add these other roads as well, so that's fine. We did already get them out for Jonesboro Road, we don't have them out for the others, but we can just put it on the resolution for staff to proceed with it. Commissioner Wilson, you talked about a road. Can you go ahead and speak about your road?
Yeah, I have table roads, and I think it's important for us to put all of these roads on the same resolution, but we need to, as a board, I think we need to table this and come back with a workshop and let the staff come up with a list and a price. That way, we can present everything at one time instead of adding to it as we go, because I'm not in favor of putting a resolution out there that we're not really clear exactly what's included, of what roads are included and then the price. So I think it's, we could table this and come back at a later date when everybody has the roads submitted with the number of streetlights and the cost.
Well, I know that we're working since, and I know that the Jonesboro Road number is already there. Commissioner Thomas has already worked, they got that number, so I would like to move forward with adding those three roads, and if we can always come back and add another resolution to add District 1 road. Commissioner Baum, did you have a road that you needed to add?
Ask Commissioner Clemens, you talking about Jonesboro Road. You talking about the east side of 75 or just the west side?
Commissioner Baum, you know, you and I have both talked about it, it's both sides. We need to make sure that that main corridor where the commercial part of the roads are, that if it's not streetlights, that streetlights are there, so that will be the east side and the west side if you choose to, if that's where you want it, on the east side. Go ahead, Sherry.
Vice Chair Clemens, just for clarification, you're just wanting to amend this resolution to add the additional roads, but we'll still have to bring the resolution back to the board because those will be separate contracts. We can't award, we can't proceed with the Jonesboro Road or any other streetlight districts until we get a contract from those providers, and then this board will have to approve that. So I just want to make sure you all understand, we can certainly add those additional roads that staff will bring back a resolution, but we don't have the authority under this resolution to authorize a contract because we don't have the contract to approve.
Sherry, I think what we can do is, we can approve this resolution, but Commissioner Clemens and the rest of the commissioners, they can they can vote to add.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Holmes, I can't hear you.
So I think, I think we can add to this agenda street lighting for those additional roads at this meeting, because I think Georgia Power is in your, in you guys' area. So if you want...
Yeah, Sherry, we're not adding the contract. What we're saying is that we are adding a line item that we would add streetlights, that the county would also fund the streetlights in the main corridors throughout the county for lights, and then the amounts, and when we get the contracts, we'll come back and do it, but we need to put it on the resolution. If we're going to add streetlights, we want to make sure that all of the major corridors get the streetlights.
And so what we'll need is a resolution authorizing the ease of fund balance, because if I remember, the Jonesboro Road project was... Help me run.
What are we using for this one? What funds are we using for this?
This is, right now, what Rocky's bringing to you is going to be DOT funds, but Commissioner Clemens, this is about two years out. They're just asking us, they're going to pay for it until this project is turned back over to the county. So then the county will pay for it, yes, ma'am, but we're talking about $159,000. I think the Jonesboro Road was a little more than that, so well, it doesn't, we, but it's part, we're paying $13.28 per month for 120 payments, and then I think we'll actually own them at that point. What I'm saying is that we need to have two separate resolutions. This resolution needs to be approved, and then if you all want to amend the agenda to add a resolution authorizing staff to proceed with bringing those contracts back, we can do that, but I can't do it under this one.
Yeah, Commissioner Clemens, I think it's a better idea when we get to the end, when we get to the end of the meeting to to make a motion to add those other two corridors to the agenda, just to keep everything clean.
Commissioner Baum and Commissioner Thomas, are you guys okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
Yes, I'm okay with that.
So with that, I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
Have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor. Stephanie, we have a five-o unanimous vote for the resolution.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to our DOT, our resolution.
Vice Chair, we have one more.
Go ahead, Rocky.
Yes, Vice Chair, we have, the next resolution is the roadway agreement for Rock Quarry Road. Rock Quarry Road is an approved District 4, and it's SLOSS 4 and SLOSS 5 transportation project. The Georgia Department of Transportation and Henry County propose to let to construction Rock Quarry Road from Eagles Landing to State Route 42 slash State Route 138. Henry County agrees to abide by all state and/or federal regulations, rules, laws, and guidelines when acquiring all the necessary roadway for Rock Quarry Road. The estimated roadway cost for Rock Quarry Road is $7,280,000, with GDOT participation of $5,600,000. The county participation is $1,660,000. Any amount over the $5,600,000 will be, it's only going to be reimbursable up to the amount of $5,600,000. Anything above that, it will be up to the county to acquire that amount of roadway after that $5.6 million. Currently, we are in the roadway, we're moving forward into the roadway phase on Rock Quarry. That's the beginning, close to Eagles Landing. That's about midways. And that's at the end at State Route 42. We're moving into final design with GDOT. Staff recommends approving the roadway agreement between Henry County and the Georgia Department of Transportation for the Rock Quarry Road. And I will take any questions at this time.
We have a question from Commissioner Wilson and then Commissioner Thomas.
I'm sorry.
So Rocky, we could be on the hook for more than the difference between the six, it's 56 million that GDOT's giving us. So we don't know what that number's going to look like. So is there a way that we can get kind of narrow it down a little bit, a little bit better? Because I'm not sure that approving this with a kind of an open checkbook type thing, because we could be on hook for a lot more than the balance.
Commissioner, what we've done, we've done a cost estimate. We had all the roadway takes on the design, so we knew that, well, how much roadway each parcel estimates we would need. An appraisal did a cost estimate, and based on that cost estimate, which is what we would use to acquire the roadway, that's what the number comes from. So it could be more, it could be less, but basically, all this is, is an agreement stating that we are going to get reimbursed for the first $5.6 million from GDOT. Anything after that, it'll be up to the county, and we do have the funds on SLOSS.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, Rocky, go back to one of your slides. You say you're starting up near the Eagles Landing Parkway, and you're going down to 42. I think we had another discussion that we'll be going as far as Banks Road, correct?
That is correct, Commissioner. For the purpose of the roadway, we want to go ahead and acquire everything at one time because the environmental has been approved by the federal highway. We did have this, we have had the discussion of, for construction-wise, to stop the project at Banks, which is about kind of in the middle of the screen. So bringing the four lane all the way to Banks, but for the purpose of, since the design is already done for, basically, you know, from Eagles Landing to 42, go ahead and acquire the roadway for the entire corridor. As you know, roadway would be much cheaper now than waiting years from now to acquire that roadway. So we are looking at facing the project in two phases, from Eagles Landing to Banks, and then from Banks to 42.
Have you had any discussion with the city about monies to help buy that roadway?
We have not yet, but we surely can do that, because most of that portion from Banks all the way to 42 is within the city.
It was one of the criterias that I said, that that discussion needs to take place prior to secure another part of that or committing to the other part of that money. And I wanted to know, how do we end up back at this point?
So Commissioner Thomas, this is Sherry. When we were going through our SLOSS 5 negotiations, we did reach out myself and our deputy county manager to the city manager regarding any allocation of funds that the cities of Stockbridge will be willing to commit to this project. Based on the project list that the city submitted to the county as part of SLOSS 5, there was no allocation of funding committed for the project. So we did make the effort to reach out and ask if they would be committed to providing some funding for that project, and we were not successful in getting that to happen. And again, Commissioner Thomas, that was during the SLOSS 5 development of the project list and the conversations back and forth regarding what projects the cities would be doing versus what the county would be doing. What we wanted to do was to see specifically on projects that crossed over municipal boundaries where we could partner with them to provide some additional funding, but we were not successful in getting a commitment from the city of Stockbridge regarding any funding or any assistance on Rock Quarry Road.
Then we will be doing this in phases.
Because, yes, ma'am, the construction.
No, we will be doing this in phases with this resolution.
I hear you. Okay, thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, if the discussion is... Madam, Madam Vice Chair, if the discussion is over, I'll be willing to put forth a motion.
Yes, go ahead and make your amendments.
I want to make a motion that we approve this resolution to continue up to Banks Road only. Have the numbers then presented to us about doing that. We would do this, widening in phases. And I'm asking everyone to approve the motion, knowing that, that we would do this in phases. Phase one would take us to Banks Road. We will make right-of-way purchases up to Banks Road. And discussion will continue after that with the cities.
So Rocky, the resolution is being presented to be approved with the right-of-way agreement ending at Banks Road.
Okay. One second.
So Commissioner Thomas, we may have to table this item so that we can revise the agreement with GDOT. This was an agreement that they sent down and it's not based on a phased approach. So can we table this? We will have a call meeting of the board on August the 11th, and we can bring it back during that time. But I don't want to mislead you that we're able to break it down without getting that approval from GDOT.
Thank you, Sheri. Well, at this point in time, if that's what we have to do with GDOT, we're going to table it. Because I am not willing to take this to 42 without some type of input from the city of Stockbridge.
And Commissioner Thomas, if you'd like, we can try to schedule another meeting with you present, with the city of Stockbridge to talk through it and see if we can come to some resolution prior to the meeting on the 11th.
That would be very important and quite the most feasible thing to do, so we can get past this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to table this agenda item. Can I get a second? Second about Commissioner Barm, Commissioner Holmes has voted in favor, Commissioner Wilson? Stephanie, it is a five zero, that we will table this resolution.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have a presentation by Rocky again for the Western Parallel Connector.
Yes, Vice Chair. This is also a right-of-way agreement, very similar to the one presented before. The Georgia Department of Transportation and Henry County propose to let construction the Western Parallel Hudson Bridge to Jonesboro Road. Henry County agrees to abide by all state and/or federal regulations, rules, laws, and guidelines when acquiring all the necessary right-of-way for the Western Parallel Connector project. The estimated right-of-way cost is $10,670,000, with GDOT participation of $6 million and the county participation of $4,670,000. Any amount over the $6 million will not be reimbursable. Henry County, again, is agreeing to acquire the right-of-way. GDOT will reimburse up to $6 million for the right-of-way for the Western Parallel Connector. Funding for the right-of-way will have to come from fund balance. And this, just to let you know, GDOT is moving forward, the design, they already have the preliminary field plan review. And this is a drawing of the project from, on the top screen is your beginning at Jonesboro Road. And then on the, on the bottom part, on your right, it will be your ending of the project, Hudson Bridge. Staff recommends approving of the right-of-way agreement. And I will take any questions at this time.
Commissioner Holmes?
I just want to say, great job to Commissioner Clemens. She's been working on this for about four years now. And it is a beautiful depiction of what that road is going to look like. And so I just want to say congratulations again, and we look forward to seeing it come to fruition.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson? You're on mute, Commissioner Wilson.
I think you mentioned last year, Commissioner Clemens, that in a meeting, we were talking about the Western Parallels, that you were going to have that number of landowners come to you with donations of the right-of-way. So do we have a list of them, landowners, and how much of those right-of-ways are, are going to pray for? Or, so we need to consider that as well. I mean, $10 million was, because I, I was understanding that everybody's going to donate, donate the right-of-ways.
I'm going to let, well, first of all, that money that we have for the right-of-way was given to us by GDOT, and I'll let Rocky confirm that. We were given money. That money is not coming from us. That money was already allocated to the county for those right-of-ways. We're still lacking, and Patrick has been working on the donations of those right-of-ways. And we do have landowners that are donating the right-of-way. So we shouldn't exceed that $6 million. But that $6 million was given to us specifically from GDOT for the right-of-way, and it has to be used for that. Rocky, will you clarify?
I'm clear where the money's coming from. I just wanted to make sure that these landowners are still willing to donate the right-of-ways. And I'll say this, like I said, in the last right-of-ways on Rockaway Road, if it exceeds that, we're going to be out of pocket. Because we kind of, we don't really know what it's going to cost us. So we kind of had an open checkbook as well, so.
Well, Commissioner Wilson, the beauty of this project is that those landowners have undeveloped property unless that Western Parallel comes through there. They have nowhere to get to their property, they have no roads to get to their property. Their property is useless and, and it, they has no, has very little value because there's no road. And so the conversation that they've had at this point is that they need that road in order to make their properties valuable, and I'm, I'm sure you understand that. So, yeah. I, I hope, okay. So we'll go from there. Rocky, I don't know if you want to respond, if Commissioner Wilson needs some response on that or not.
I just, I don't, I'm not sure that these people are landlocked, but either way, but I'm clear, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Barm?
Yes, Rocky, and if you kind of explain, I, I noticed on the resolution, it's 10.6 million. And I was, I was trying to kind of have an understanding, how did we come up that estimate? And I'm kind of, Commissioner Wilson, on this thing, we, we was under the impression that everything was going to be donated, and the county wouldn't be out anything. But it looks like DOT is going to reimburse us up to $6 million. But after the $6 million, they won't reimburse us for that 4.6, if, if that is the right number. And I just wanted to have an understanding, how you came up with that number.
First of all, we, at this point, on the, before we get this approved, before we can start actually talking to the property owners about right-of-way, and, and I know there's been some discussions about donating, we cannot, the county could not accept any donations until this agreement is signed. Once this, this agreement is signed by, between us and GDOT, then we can accept any donations. And we'll be seeking those donations as well. We will have to provide them the fair market value, but if, if they're willing to donate, we will take those donations as well. Then the $10 million plus, that comes from an appraisal doing an estimate of the value of the corridor, of the, of the right-of-way that we need, just like any project that we do. We do have an appraisal that does that. That appraisal goes to GDOT, GDOT reviews that, look at the comps, and they, they look at all the right-of-way that we need, and they approve that right-of-way cost. So it's not like we just came up with a number, and a professional does that, we send that to GDOT, GDOT reviews it, they approve it, and that's how they come up with this agreement. And, and you're correct, everything, anything below $6 million, with the county doesn't have to pay for it. The first $6 million is all coming from GDOT. If the cost, cost, if the, all the right-of-way costs less than $6 million, then we don't, we don't have to pay anything. So hopefully, there's some big land developers out there that they would need the, the road more than we, well, we needed to. But it would benefit them as well. So hopefully, we, we will be seeking those donations, and hopefully, we'll be under the $6 million. But if not, it would have to come from fund balance.
Yes, and I understand that, and it is, it is a great project and well-needed. I'm just a little concerned about the 4.6. And I heard you mention that, that money would have to come out of fund balance if it goes to 4.6.
And, and just to, just to mention, we did, we have done this in the past, we actually did two bridges where, one of them was on Black Hall and the other one was on your district, Elliott Road, with S plus four funds. And we had $300,000 on both of them, and the right-of-way came below that number. So just to give you an, an idea, I know this is a bigger project, more right-of-way, but we've done this in the past where we end up paying less for the right-of-way. So it could happen.
So is this going to actually come back to us?
No.
So we have, so we can have a negotiating tool over these property owners? Because once they know we're going to pay, I don't look for media to donate.
No, it will not, it only will come back to the board unless there's a condemnation. If there's not a condemnation, it will never come back to the board. We would acquire the right-of-way our normal way.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Wilson?
I have a question for the county manager.
Yes, sir.
At one time, wasn't GDOT going to totally fund this project?
Yes, sir. So about, oh gosh, maybe six, seven years ago, GDOT did have this project 100% funded for right-of-way construction and preliminary engineering. So yes.
So when did they change their mind?
It's my understanding, Commissioner Wilson, that there were property owners, so I think, Commissioner Clemens, you can chime in, who reached out to Commissioner Clemens regarding the donation of right-of-way. GDOT had some conversations with the district commissioner, I think Commissioner Holmes was there, myself and Commissioner Wood, regarding several county projects. And during that meeting, there was conversation regarding the right-of-way being donated. At that time, GDOT put the burden on the county to go ahead and proceed with trying to get the right-of-way acquired, because those property owners had committed to, or at least some of the property owners had committed to the donation of the, or donation of those parcels. Commissioner Clemens, I know you were present, so if I've misspoken, please chime in.
Commissioner Wilson, you asked, when did they change their minds? Even though GDOT gave several projects in Henry County that they were funded 100%. We had the Jonesboro Road project, we also had the Western Parallel Connector project. But they did set aside a certain amount of money for those projects. These projects are over 10 years old, and now what they said, that they were getting ready to abandon the projects, that's the part that our county manager missed. When we got word that the projects were going to be abandoned and that this money would move from Henry County, we had to come to the table to add more money in order to keep the monies in Henry County. So if we allow $4 million to keep us from getting a four-lane road, then this money, like most of the money, will go to the north part of the state, because they will abandon the project, because the project is no longer feasible. So I'm glad that we're at this point, I'm glad that this will go through. This is all that they're going to give us. And if the county doesn't come to the table to bring something to the table to get this four-lane access road on the side of 75, then we will lose this funding. So they decided that it was no longer feasible, Commissioner Wilson. That's when they decided that they would not be 100%. What they considered 100% 10 years ago, the value has changed.
So the meeting you had with them, they actually told you that they was going to abandon the Western Parallels?
Yes, it was not feasible anymore. The 40 million, what was it, 40 or 60 million dollars, Sheri, it was, that they were going to give.
I think, Commissioner Clemens, if I recall, they were actually going to delay the project, specifically Jonesboro Road was actually pushed back. And then we received notification from GDOT that due to the right-of-way costs being so expensive, they were reducing the multi-use paths along the project, and they were going to have to scale the project down. And so that's what I recollect from, from that meeting with GDOT.
So Commissioner Wilson, if the project was no longer feasible, or they had to push the project back to 20, 30 something, it was still not going to be feasible in that in 2030 either, because the values are just going to continue to go up. So we had to act quickly. That was the reason for us bringing our property owners to the table, to try to reduce the cost of the project. This project has moved expeditiously as a result of us having those conversations and moving forward. We have an opportunity to have a four-lane road on the side of 75 within the next year, if we can move on this project. And I think that's going to be huge for, for this county.
So they wasn't going to abandon, they're just going to push it back, and they needed more funding? So I'm just trying to get clear of the conversation between GDOT and Henry County. So they wasn't going to abandon the proper, the, the project? So they're just going to push it back, and they was going, the Henry County to step in and give them funding? So I'm kind of confused. So. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Commissioner Thomas? You're on mute.
Thank you, Commissioner. I do want to thank you for doing the hard work and the hard work getting this done. It is very much needed. But what I'm looking beyond this to say is that this will bring an economic engine to the county. Because when we open up those four lanes over in that particular area, going from Hudson Bridge to Jodaco, we'll then have a way for traffic to travel through there, for businesses to establish there, to bring more jobs there, to bring more tax dollars there, to bring more to this county that's needed to operate from. So I see this as an economic engine to the county. Of course, there again, I want to thank you for being there the past four years, working on this to make it happen. We're at this point now, we can see it to the end, and I think we should go forth with it, because it's more than a road. It's going to be an economic engine to this county. It's jobs, it's taxes, it's more money, it's opportunity for us to grow in a positive direction. So I do see this as something worth doing. And it's not like we're detaching anything. We're actually adding connectivity to a very high-populated area, which is Hudson Bridge, and another very flourishing populated area, which is Jodaco Road. So this is great for the county, and I'm glad to see it come forth.
And Commissioner Thomas, it goes from Hudson Bridge to Jonesboro Road. So it goes even past Jodaco, all the way to Jonesboro. So people don't, our residents don't have to get on 75 in that traffic. They will now have an access road on the side of 75 to travel to, as we try to expand our roads. A lot of that land, and even, and I think, Rocky, please correct me, you and Patrick are there, the $6 million, if we just go from Hudson to Jonesboro Road, we still have to look at working with Stockbridge and that Jodaco project to go further. But the first part of the road will definitely go from Hudson Bridge to Jodaco, and then we will be expanding down to Jonesboro Road, which is past Mount Olive and really opening up that, the side access road of 75.
Commissioner Clemens, we will be doing all of it.
Thank you.
And thank you for clarifying that. I meant to say Jonesboro Road. And thank you so much for drawing that picture, so everybody can see the opportunity that this particular road brings. It's more than just a road, it's an economic engine for the county.
At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the right-of-way of the Western Parallel Connector. I see a motion from Commissioner Holmes, second from Commissioner Thomas. I need a vote from Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Barm. Commissioner Barm is in favor? Commissioner Wilson, you in favor or not in favor?
Not in favor.
So Stephanie, we have a four to one with the resolution passing, and Henry County can look forward to the Western Parallel Connector. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is a planning and zoning item for countywide, and we will have Stacy Jordan Redfield that will present.
Good morning, Manager, Vice Chair and Commissioners. Stacy's coming up in a sec, I'm going to kind of introduce the discussion, and then I'll let Stacy take it from there. We're pulling it up right now.
While they are getting ready for that, Patrick, if you would, begin to work on the resolution authorizing staff to proceed with contracts for the installation, maintenance, and energy costs for the lighting of the corridors, main corridors of the county. You got it, Patrick? Thank you. Okay. Tucson, you can proceed when you're ready.
Yes, ma'am. So this morning, we wanted to discuss the highway corridor overlay. In the recent past, we've had various requests for the overlay that affects the residential development for the interior only, okay? Such as sidewalks, streetlights, tree location, things of that nature. We've had about Um, we've had about four or five various requests each time there is a development that comes before us. Uh, we've already had two that have been approved, uh, with variances. We have two that are pending the outcome of this ordinance. And so, uh, what we're looking at is usually we have a question or a request for reduction in sidewalk width, tree locations, landscaping strips, which affects the utility real, the utility locations. Um, David Simmons has talked with the water authority, AT&T, and some of the electric providers to try to see what we can do underground to make this all work. Um, so what we're gonna do this morning is show you what the county standard is right now, what the Heron Bay standard is, and with the proposed overlay standard, uh, uh, that we were requesting. Uh, we will try to bring this back for the first meeting in September, uh, if we can get everything worked out with the utility companies. And we have David Simmons on the call just in case we have any technical questions.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, what we'd like to do is to go through our presentation at this time. We have identified issues, just as Tucson had, had stated. We have some ideas about how to amend our highway corridor overlay district. And what we would ask from you and the commissioners today is to, to give us some, some topics to address that we can bring back to you for a vote at a later time. As Tucson had mentioned, the issues that keep coming before planning and zoning is regarding within subdivisions that are located in the highway corridor overlay district. What is displayed is our countywide standard. To blow that up, it shows the utilities, um, color coded in, in these, these various colors on this slide, and it shows a four foot sidewalk, which is our countywide standard outside of the overlay. In years past, we have had instances where we've had to accommodate street trees. And so this standard that's displayed was used for Heron Bay. It accommodates the street trees, but it also maintains the four foot sidewalk, which is a countywide standard. What we don't have yet is a utility standard for those subdivisions within the highway corridor overlay district. The problem with our overlay at this time is that it requires a sidewalk wider than four feet. And at this time, it requires a sidewalk that is eight feet wide. What's displayed at this time is a proposal for the relocation of utilities for subdivisions within the overlay, but it anticipates a change to our highway corridor overlay district, reducing the width of the sidewalk from eight feet to five feet. So this is the current proposal. Unless David can correct me, it has not yet been approved by all of our utility providers. But we are, we're working on that at this time. So I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Commissioner Thomas?
Are you asking us to reduce the size of our sidewalks back to five feet? Uh, where we are, um, really trying to go eight and ten feet sidewalks in a county? Is that what you're proposing?
Um, yes, ma'am, but it's only for the interior, not for the, along the highways or along the roads, only in the interior of the subdivision itself. The eight feet foot sidewalks is causing conflict with the utilities. Uh, the East Lake project that was approved, um, maybe two months ago, um, had we stuck with the eight foot sidewalks, the front yard would have been twelve feet deep. So, uh, variances were granted. So now you have a fifteen to twenty foot sidewalk, you have fifteen to twenty foot, uh, front yard in that subdivision versus only a twelve foot, um, front yard.
My concern is, as we're planning and going forward, we need to consider the fact, one, that we are living in a COVID environment and people need that distance apart. And two, COVID is not going away, and there's gonna be other, um, pandemics I'm quite sure that we're going to have to address. So do we need to change other codes to accommodate this and maintain our eight feet sidewalks minimum in the county? As people are walking to a fro, be it in their neighborhoods, and a lot of people walk in their neighborhoods, they're trying to find ways to have and continue their lifestyle and have that distance between them as needed. So I'm concerned about this request. Maybe there need to be some other things that we need to adjust, knowing that we are in a COVID environment, to ensure that the yardage is there for the homeowners, front and back, and to increase the sidewalk size as needed for developments going forth.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Uh, Tucson and Stacy, I know this is discussion only, so when you all bring it back to us, maybe you can have it where it says eight feet size while, eight feet sidewalks where it's, uh, where it's able to be based on the, um, utilities. And if there's an issue with utilities, then the commissioners in that area can work with the developer at that time to put a condition on it.
Okay. Um, just currently, yeah, just currently right now, you're getting four variances, var- management requests, and that's, that's a lot. So that means that something needs to be tweaked, so, uh, we could look into that.
Commissioner Baum?
Thank you. Uh, my view of it, I, I think our best approach would be to take the residential completely out of that picture and then leave, allow each commissioner to make conditions. So if it'll, if it'll hold an eight foot sidewalk or ten foot sidewalk, then we move in that direction. But, but allow the commissioner to have that flexibility to, um, just, just take residential out of it. That would solve a la la problem. It goes back to the utilities. Uh, when we have minimum setbacks and that sort of thing, it just won't fit. And, and I think just pretty much every subdivision we approve, we gonna have issues for this. And I think it, you know, leave it up to the, the individual commissioner. They can go with a five foot sidewalk, a six foot, whatever works for the project. Uh, and the lighting, uh, I would like to see the lighting taken out in the residential to go with a normal street lighting that, that fits that neighborhood that Georgia Powell would normally put in a subdivision and, uh, and keep the, uh, commercial in, uh, like we got it. So just my thoughts. Thank you.
Uh, yes, sir. So, um, taking it out of the overlay would be beneficial. Uh, we've made that recommendation to some developers before, but they didn't take heed to that. Um, but that is something that we can do and have the commissioners, like you say, make the, uh, depending on the, uh, the development itself. Uh, and as far as street lights are concerned, um, we do have a street light. You have street lights, you have pedestrian lights. So we propose they're both not needed because it's a lot of light. You have several subdivisions around town with pedestrian lights only. It looks nice. So, um, you know, it's six and one and a half, you know, half the other. So just depends on how we wanna make the, uh, development look.
Well, thank you, Tucson. This is discussion only. Um, I would hope that you would meet each commissioner before you guys present it back to us to get comments and feedbacks on the entire project and what you're looking to do. And we'll look forward to you guys bringing it back in September.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Okay. We're gonna move to the next agenda item. Thank you, Tucson and Stacy. This is gonna be a Sam Baker transportation, um, resolution. Sam, if you will present to us at this time.
Yes, good morning, everybody. Please give me a minute to share my screen. It is the intention of the Henry County Board of Commissioners to create a citizen-appointed transportation advisory group. Uh, the purpose of creating this group is to engage Henry County's citizens in Henry County's transportation planning process and in implementation of transportation projects. The idea is to have ten members on this group. Five of the ten members will be from the five commission districts. Uh, the sixth member will represent, uh, the county, uh, commission chair. And the remaining four, uh, members will be from the cities of Stockbridge, McDonough, Locust Grove, and Hampton. Initially, we were thinking we were going to ask you commissioners and the mayors to appoint members to this group. Later, after much discussion of, uh, among us, we came to the conclusion that we would get better representation, uh, from our citizens if we solicit applications from our citizens directly. So if you create this, um, board, we will then solicit applications from our citizens. Um, so, um, I shared with you in the past that, uh, I came here from Hall County. In Hall County, I had seven years of experience with the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation. And I, I, from my personal experience, I found it, uh, that such a body provided a lot of value. Oftentimes, the citizens brought up issues and, uh, topics on various transportation matters, which we, the government officials, uh, did not think of or probably would not have considered. So, um, based on my past experience, I, I think, uh, such a, uh, group is of great value. And I want to compliment the Board of Commissioners for coming up with this idea of creating such a board, uh, such a group. And I recommend that you approve this, uh, draft resolution, creating such a group. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you might have.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, I have been, for lack of a better word, in the forefront fighting about this transportation issue. Um, fought to make sure we had a director here, Mr. Baker, so that transportation would be at the front, on the front burner with the commissioners here in Henry County. Uh, and I wanna thank Mr. Baker for being here, going to the other meetings around, uh, the area. And I don't know, all these different boards you've been going to. Thank you for having a conversation with the different cities about what we need to do about transportation. And then I came up with the idea that we definitely need a, um, citizen review board or some type of citizen participation to make sure the citizen's voice is heard when it comes to transportation in Henry County. Uh, one thing I do wanna add, I do believe that commissioners should appoint someone to this board. And the reason why I say that because each commissioner knows their district. They know the people that are actively involved into wanting to make change in the county. Uh, they know the people who have voices and can be ambassadors to, uh, actually bring other people to, to participate in other activities in the county. So I do agree that, uh, there could be some slots available that you all can look at applications. But at least the commissioner should have appointees on that board. Um, I am happy to know that you have worked with other boards of transportation before. And in our conversation, you said you're comfortable in working with boards in transportation. Um, I do agree that it's fine to let part of the, uh, this, the city have appointees to the board as well. Because when people ride on roads in Henry County, they don't know which one is the county board, a road, a city road, a state road. They're just riding on roads and they want some type of resolution. So I am in favor of county commissioners appointing someone to be on this board to work with you because those people will talk to us and they will tell us what's happening in our area. They have been immediate communication with us. They also need to understand our philosophy when it comes to transportation in Henry County as well and learn how to balance out the need based upon a philosophy and based upon what the whole county needs to move forward. So those are my comments at the moment.
Commissioner Thomas, I hear you that you would, uh, prefer to appoint, um, members to that group. Let me, uh, so, make a proposal. Would you be open to, uh, us, uh, soliciting applications from citizens? And then come, me coming back to you, uh, with a list of ten citizens for you to approve?
I would like to hear from some of the other commissioners after I put out my point of view at this point in time. So let me stand to the side here from some other commissioners.
Commissioner Holm, Commissioner Baum, please.
Yeah, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Thomas one hundred percent. Um, you know, I think the, uh, Board of Commissioners, each member, you know, we know our communities very well. And we know who's interested in being on, um, uh, different types of committees. So I think it should be entirely up to the commissioners to make these choices.
All right.
Commissioner Baum and then Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, I, uh, agree with, uh, um, Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Holmes. I'm really kinda offended, Mr. Baker, that you don't think we're capable of making that happen. And, uh, I'm very disappointed in that. But I think I, I know somebody in my district that's got some engineering experience that, that I can put on there.
If I may say, I know you are very capable of appointing members. I just am not going to mention Sherri's name here.
Commissioner Wilson, did you have a comment?
I do. I would like to be involved in the appointment, but let the process go through Mr. Baker's office to make sure the appointment we made is qualified to do, be a member of this board. So I, I wanna, I wanna agree with all the other commissioners, but I wanna flip flop his recommendations. I think it should be appointed from the board and go through the process and, and make sure they qualify with the. So that's, that's my comments.
So in the resolution, there's a qualification of what the committee has to have. So if the commissioners are making or finding their appointments, the qualification list is there. We can do a check off of the list and present our appointments. Uh, so that's the same, that satisfies what Commissioner Wilson is saying and what the other commissioners are saying. Um, at this time, we're gonna call for, uh, the motions with the corrections of that the commissioners will do their own appointments based on the criteria set forth in the resolution. We have a motion from Commissioner Thomas, from Commissioner Holmes, uh, Commissioner Baum. And we get a favorable from you and Commissioner Wilson. Stephanie, that is a five oh unanimous vote. We're moving on to discussion only agenda items for guidelines. Okay, we've, um, taken off seventeen B, which was from, um, Commissioner Woods. Um, at this time, are you all ready for the finance resolution?
Are we ready?
No.
If you're not, we can move this to the seven o'clock, I mean, to the five o'clock meeting.
It's already on the agenda for five, so we'll just revisit it at five P M.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any questions in reference to this finance that we're gonna move to five o'clock because we're not quite ready for it? Okay. At this time, Patrick, will you, uh, bring the resolution on that we, uh, present the resolution for the street lights, uh, installation and maintenance for the major corridors and energy costs for lighting?
Yeah, bear with me one second. Um, I've, I've been working on it. Let me get my computer.
At this time, I'm gonna just, uh, bring up the, uh, approval of the minutes for the June tenth, twenty twenty B O C workshop meeting. Um, can I get a motion to approve the approval of the minutes for the June tenth, twenty twenty B O C meeting? This is item nineteen. This is, uh, um, for, we need a motion to approve the June tenth B O C workshop meeting minutes. We have a motion from Commissioner Holmes. Second from Commissioner Thomas. This is item nineteen. Um, all in favor of the approval of the June tenth, twenty twenty B O C workshop meeting? Commissioner Baum, Commissioner Wilson? We have a five oh, Stephanie, for the approval of the June tenth, twenty twenty workshop meetings minutes.
Thank you.
And we will do the upcoming meetings and events, item twenty-two. And we'll come back to the, uh, resolution from Patrick. And so that, we'll just do county management comments and commissioner comments. Um, we have upcoming meetings, August fourth, August eleventh, August eighteenth, and September first as printed in our upcoming meetings and events. We need a motion to approve these upcoming meetings and events. Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Holmes. We need a vote from Baum and Wilson. Stephanie, we have our upcoming meetings and events, five oh, with unanimous votes. Patrick?
So we're, we're gonna have a couple of questions we're gonna have to work through as I talk to the county manager. So the way I understand the resolution that you want is a resolution to authorize and direct the county manager and her staff to proceed with the installation of streetlights on certain designated roads. And I'm gonna need you all to help me identify all of those roads. I understand Jonesboro Road was one, and I don't know, I don't know, it was a little unclear to me whether there's additional roads.
This was, this is a four-month discussion. And what staff had asked each Commissioner for was to identify those roads in their district that were major corridor roads that were dark. So this was, uh, considered a, uh, health and a safety issue. And we were identifying major roads that are well-traveled, mostly traveled in our districts that were dark and that needed to be lightened, and it was the county's responsibility to light up those roads. Georgia Power has given some assessments and some costs. Um, they've also looked at lights that were LED-type lights, so they would put the poles up. Those lights would come on as a result of being charged over the sun, so it's less cost-effective on the county. Uh, Commissioners have been asked over and over to identify those roads. And so some of the Commissioners have gotten those roads together. So this resolution is to add those roads and to authorize staff to proceed with getting the contracts from those specific, um, power companies so that we can light up the roads in our county.
So, um, Vice Chair Clemens, if I remember correctly, that information was supposed to be forwarded to Kayla in the county manager's office. And it's my understanding that Commissioner Wilson was the only Commissioner that provided that information. I think Chair Wood did as well. I'll have to check with Kayla, if you give me a second, I'll run back out there. But I have not received any other requests from any other Commissioners regarding, um, streetlights along those major corridors. You are correct, we've been asking for this for some time. But I don't, I'll check with Kayla, but I don't think we have any outside of what Commissioner Wilson, um, provided.
And Commissioner Clemens, you have mine?
Yes, outside of yours, yes, yes.
And so we'll add those now. Uh, Commissioner Wilson, do you remember which roads you wanted lightened up?
Uh, I do not, and I probably had some more to add. I had to go back on, um, some emails and stuff, but, uh, I've been out of commission for quite a while. But either way, uh, I would like to have a chance to go back and revisit to make sure that we're put them in, put these streetlights in the proper, um, on the proper roads in my district. And I think it'd be the right thing to do, let every Commissioner have a chance to revisit that and put, compile the list and bring it back and for approval. Um, so that's, but, but no, I, I don't remember.
Okay, well, I will ask that we proceed with the ones that we have, because Jonesboro Road has been waiting for over six months. Commissioner Barn?
Yes, uh, I certainly, uh, in favor of doing Jonesboro Road, uh, from the city limits out on the major corridor like we had talked, discussed later, later. And, uh, I've got several intersections, maybe not lighting the whole straight up, but I'll, uh, come back to the board, uh, at a later time and, and provide a list, maybe get staff to help me, uh, come up with a list of where we got some intersections that need to be lit up. But I do, I have several and I'll bring back to the board at a later time, thank you.
So we will do our major corridors now, and then, I agree, Commissioner Barn, there are several intersections. And so we'll do another, um, proposal later for intersections, that's great. Um, Commissioner Holmes and then Commissioner Thomas?
I agree with, uh, Commissioner Barn, um, but, um, I have one road I would like to add right now, and that would be, uh, Fairview Road from, uh, Panola to Hearn. Um, but I want to do it in junction, in conjunction with the, uh, future road widening of Fairview Road.
Commissioner Thomas?
We're just stating. What everyone is stating, but I do want to leave the, uh, resolution have an opening on the end to allow us to do an amendment to it, to add other roads as staff make recommendations to us by district. So go ahead with what we have now, stating that we will leave, um, uh, this resolution open for either for a quarter one or an amendment to add other roads if this needed a recommendation.
So Vice Chair Clemens, the two roads that Commissioner Wilson presented, did we want to go ahead and add those? It was 1520 South Olah Road, which is, which was an intersection, and then Cohen and Old Jackson Road, which were intersections. I think I've heard intersections and major corridors, so.
So we're doing, we're doing, we're doing major corridors now, and Commissioner Barn has asked that we would allow, um, the intersections to come at a separate time, because there were several intersections. So we want to do a major corridor, street lighting project now, and then we can come back and do our intersections. Uh, Commissioner Wilson, I know you and I need to talk about another intersection that we have together. But we're looking at major corridors now, um, Ms. Matthews?
Thank you.
So I, I think the major corridors we've identified are Jo- Jonesboro Road from Panola to Hearn Road?
No, 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 Panola to Hearn, those are two different roads.
Jonesboro Road, I'm sorry, no, you're right, and, um.
Jonesboro Road from City of McDonough West.
Yeah, and the other road will be done in connection with the widening project. So I'm not sure, you, you wouldn't need to do that, and we can just make sure we include that in the widening project cost. Um, and you'll authorize and direct the county manager and her staff to contract with, uh, Georgia Power to install the streetlights and to fund the utility cost and installation costs out of the Henry County DOT budget.
And maintenance.
And maintenance, and you can also go ahead and say that, uh, additional, um, major thoroughfares will be identified by resolution of the Board of Commissioners at a later date.
Make sure you add Rock Quarry, because that was on there, I didn't hear Rock Quarry.
Hey, Patrick, I want, uh, I want, I want to keep Fairview on this list as well.
Okay, I want to make sure I get all the roads.
Rock Quarry and Campground.
Okay, so I've got Rock Quarry Road, and would that be the full extent Rock Quarry Road? Or the areas in the unincorporated area, how do you want to do that?
Unincorporated areas at this point in time.
Okay.
And the same with Campground.
Campground Road, unincorporated areas. Fairview Road and Jonesboro Road are the.
You have, you have Jodico and Highway 20.
Got it. Okay. So the resolution will authorize management and staff to proceed with contracting with Georgia Power for the installation and funding utility and maintenance costs from the DOT.
And I would suggest instead of saying Georgia Power, because there's different providers.
From the power provider.
Yes, correct.
Providers. Uh, Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, Commissioner Clemens, we need to go ahead and, and add, uh, additional lighting for the intersection that you were speaking of, with Leicester Mill and the Bill Gardner Parkway. Now, we did add one last year at the intersection, but I think approach on all four corners, approaching that intersection, which, um, some of them's gonna be in your district and some of them's gonna be in my district. So we look at Bill Gardner Parkway going east and west. I think approaching that intersection with, with lighting and with Leicester Mill Road on both sides on the approach part of it. So I think we need to add that while he's putting it together.
Thank you, Wilson, that's definitely, you and I have been working on it for a while. I think this is a perfect opportunity for it, thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
Yeah, now that I think about it, um, I would like to add, um, um, East Atlanta Road from the City of Stockbridge line to Fairview Road, and, um, Panola Road from Fairview to 155.
And I would just like to say, uh, to our county manager, Patrick, and the rest of the Commissioners, today has been huge in that we have gotten a four-lane road, we widened roads, we've added streetlights. Um, and, and this is what our citizens have been talking about for some time now. They want to see where their tax dollars are going, and we're able to do all of this without raising taxes, and that's the key. Um, and so I, I'm just thankful and very excited and happy to see this is where we are today. I want to make sure that everything is included in that, um, make sure that we add that Bill Gardner Parkway uh, up to Leicester Mill, um, in, in those directions.
And, uh, Mr. Holmes, could you, it was East Atlanta from the city limits to where?
From the city limits to Fairview Road and, uh, Panola Road from, um, from, um, actually from East Atlanta Road to, uh, 155.
Got it.
Uh, with that, we would, uh, entertain a motion to approve this resolution. Properly moved in second, Commissioner Barn, Commissioner Wilson? Stephanie, the resolution is approved with a 5-0 unanimous vote for our street lighting major corridor plans for the county. And we will, um, have Sam to look at intersections or our DOT department to look at intersection, and that's something we'll come back and do. I think if we can get started with these, uh, major corridors, then we should be good.
And, and Vice Chair, if I could just, uh, give the board a quick update on those financing issues? Where, where the delay is, is they are today, literally as we speak, pricing those bonds. In other words, they're, they're in the process of getting the price, which will be your interest rate, at which those bonds will be sold. And it's still in process, they should be done literally in any minute now. But once they finish, we're gonna have to dig into the documents, make some revisions. So I wanted you to understand what the, what the slowdown was. You want to price these as close to the date of the resolution as possible, so you don't have any gap where the interest rates raise or fall and, and you suffer the harm. So typically, we do these in the evening, but we tried to get it done this morning. We were optimistic and just overly optimistic. So we'll have it ready, it'll all be done for the evening meeting.
Thank you, Patrick.
Vice Chair, if, we do not have any public comments that, um, anyone signed up for public comment, but if we can just mention that for the record, please.
Okay, um, just for sake of making sure that we follow procedure, public comments time is now. There's no one that has signed up, and we will move on into our county manager comments, followed by Commissioner comments. Um, Sherri, remember there were some items that Commissioner Thomas asked at the beginning of the meeting, and I hope you are ready to address those as well.
Yes, ma'am, Vice Chair, and, um, just because I know we are on there, we've been going for quite some time this morning. Um, the only comments that I will make will be the update regarding the elections questions that were posed. Um, the capital update, I think Mr. Johnson has already followed up with that several times with the board. And I think Commissioner Thomas, a number of your questions have been answered regarding the capital, so that's why that was actually on the agenda. We will circle back on the transportation planning quarterly update for a later meeting. And then the COVID-19 protocol update, I will send something out to the board on that. Um, so this morning, and I hope I got everything down. If not, Vice Chair, just remind me of any of the items that I may have missed. Um, there were questions raised regarding the current election facility and specifically, um, the desire by this board to either revisit, uh, what was initially presented to the board, I think, last year, or to pursue some other options. Um, I know Commissioner Barn also asked questions regarding the expenditures that are currently under the capital list. So I'll start with the easy first. Yes, we do have $2.5 million that is currently shown on that CIP in which we are waiting, uh, what Patrick just spoke to in terms for us, in terms of us selling the bonds. When that happens, that $2.5 million will readily, I hate to say readily available, but will be available in the coming days for us to proceed with a new facility for the elections department. Now, you are correct, Commissioner Barn, that there is funding that is shown currently at 40 Atlanta Street, because many, many months back, we were talking about where the courthouse was going to go, where is storage going to be? And so the desire at that point, at least based on staff's assessment, was to go ahead and replace the roof at 40 Atlanta Street and have that as a storage facility. Currently, we are storing files for public defenders, state court, I think judicial, or state court juvenile and the public defender's office, and we are really, really out of space in terms of our storage needs. And so that's what that allocation was, um, or at least that's what that allocation is shown for, for 40 Atlanta Street, that is roofing on, only. Right now, we have about $400,000, give or take, of, um, repairs that would be currently warranted at 40 Atlanta Street, meaning the building that is currently housed by elections. And includes some ADA issues that we've got to bring that building up to code. The building is valued at about $700,000. And so that is why staff brought to this board several months ago, um, the Old Fritz Building, which is located right off or near Racetrack Road for this board to consider. Um, one, because we're gonna be able to get it at a good price, and two, because we were gonna be able to get the elections team in that building by January. Um, I don't believe at that time it was desire of the board to proceed with it. We have done some checking while the meeting has been going on, and it appears that that facility is no longer available, or at least the sign is not there. It appears that that building has either been sold or is off the market. But we do have a tract of land that's located right over, and I'll say near the DOT yard, but it's right there on 281. Um, there's a 10-acre tract of land that is owned by the county that we could certainly look at, um, building a new building, not only for elections, but also for the tax commissioner's office, um, because we are out of space in this building. And if we could spree, free up that space, that would be more space. Now, with that said, if we are to look at adding a new building, we could probably do the elections building outside of the tax commissioner's office being added, um, for about $2.5, $3 million, and I'm, I'm buzzing hutch to come up in case I'm speaking on, on my numbers. But if we were to add the tax assessor's office to it, we're looking at about a $5 million project. So yes, we do have the funding, um, allocated for a new building. Um, no, I don't believe that the facility is available, the Old Fritz Building. And it's about $400,000 for us to bring up the current elections building to code. When staff initially looked at bringing that building up to code, based on the value of the building and, and then just based on the improvements warranted, we determined that it was easier for us just to build a new building and then utilize 40 Atlanta Street for future parking when we go in to do the, um, courthouse, um, expansion and do the courthouse improvements. So there will be a future need for 40 Atlanta Street, either with that building being completely removed or for us to use it as parking as we start doing some of the construction work that's gonna be warranted at the courthouse. Um, so Commissioner Clemens, I hope that answered everything. If not, let me know and I'll try to.
So the question is more for Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Barn to make sure that their, uh, questions got answered. If you all would just, um, if you have any more questions, just let us know now. Commissioner Thomas, are you clear?
I am clear, thank you so much for your report, uh, county manager. Um, I have been to that building on 40 Atlanta Street. I do not think we need to put any more money in that building. It is just so antiquated, it is super antiquated. Um, the, the space in there, I'm quite sure an architect can go in and re-cut it up and redo, but it is an antiquated building, the way it's positioned on the property is antiquated. I think we can make better use of the property, just deciding that we either gonna make it a parking hub or decide to put another building there that would be more in tune to what we need going forward. I am happy to see that we own property that we can use to save money and build something that's adequate for our board of elections and add to the tax commissioner's office as well. I think we need to go ahead and look at putting some numbers to that, some real numbers to that, and see how feasible that is and a timeline as to how we can make it happen. Uh, I do think you do need to go ahead and start looking for something that we can move them out for, for November, something that we can rent, I know that's hard in the city. But we need to start looking around and see what can we rent to put our board of elections in, so they can work properly. And they are working in a strained condition, to say it very lightly. A very strained and uncomfortable position is where they are right now. And I, I've visited them, I've been to their meetings. We need to really take it seriously what was said, stated to us this morning.
Commissioner Barn?
Uh, yes, uh, I totally agree. Uh, I, I think a, a good thing for us to do, I, this election's pretty much done. I mean, we're not gonna be able to move into a new building this year because, uh, it's just around the corner, and then early voting will be starting pretty soon. But this gives us some time between now and the next elections that come around. I would love to see us move into a new facility, uh, $2.5 million. I think moving it off that 40, uh, Atlanta Street would be a good move because all the traffic there is kind of hard to get in and out. It needs to be really receptive to, uh, uh, our citizens. And I think the site you're talking about, uh, Ms. Matthews, would probably be a great site. And I think possibly, uh, we tear the existing building down, and I would like to see maybe a three or four-story building go right there and tie us back into our court system. So that's just my thoughts, thank you.
Commissioner, uh, Holmes and then Commissioner Wilson? Mr. Holmes, you're muted.
Sorry about that, um, wherever we decide to.
Sorry about that. Um, wherever we decide to, uh, put the building, it can't be off the beaten path. Um, every election, that is probably the main location where people go vote. So it has to be, it has to be convenient for, uh, for, uh, most citizens in the county to get to. So I'm not sure where that location is, Sherri, that you, um, you, you know, you, you, um, talked about a little bit earlier. But we got to make sure that, um, it's accessible for most citizens.
So Commissioner Holmes, it would be pretty much diagonal, di- in a diagonal from where the old election building was located.
I'm up. You're muted. But anyway, um, Sherri, you did answer my question on the location. So to be at 2081 and Phillips Drive, basically the, it's open field right there, a little triangle. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sherri, what about parking at that location?
It should, it's 10 acres, Commissioner Clemens, so it should be ample parking. Um, and that's why staff was recommending, if we're going to build it, let's go ahead and build enough for elections and maybe for another department so that we could free up some space for future spacing needs. So it should be ample parking for us to be able to get in there, build a building, uh, maybe two or three stories and then still have ample parking available.
And I don't know if we have enough, um, space or enough funds, but we need to also look at probate court.
Yes. So Commissioner Clemens, if you'll remember, the idea was initially for us to, um, renovate 40 Atlanta Street to move probate court in. We had to hurry and move elections off of the Phillips Drive location. Probate court was put on hold. With the new courthouse plan, probate court will be a part of that conversation as well. So we are going to have to, they're going to be a part of the new courthouse expansion, um, in, in, in the improvements that are going to be there. But we're definitely aware of probate court's immediate needs and specifically their parking issues that they have.
Okay. So, um, I guess we, um, will, we've answered the questions. Those are our county manager comments. If there are no more questions, go ahead.
Commissioner Clemens, just for clarification, is the board authorizing me and staff to proceed with looking at, um, hiring an architect or someone to come in and go ahead and look at that 10 acre track? Is that, I want to make sure so I can get moving on it.
Let us do it in a proper motion.
Okay.
Uh, Patrick, are you there?
I'm here.
He is here. I'll move over so he can come up.
Patrick, I will, um, state the information into the records, but can you make sure that we're following procedure to, um, bring this to the board for a vote to authorize staff? And I'll, I'll, I'll re, I'll state it. I just want to make sure this will be the proper procedure.
Okay. Yeah, please stay here because I, okay, go ahead.
Okay. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to authorize staff. Commissioner Wilson, did you have something to say first or you want me to make the motion then do discussion?
Uh, let me say, let me make this comment here, uh, to Commissioner Holmes, this comment. We could, we could put this to the next meeting because I think it's important that every commissioner go out and look at the location. And that way they'll know exactly where it's going to be located. Now, keep in mind that 2081 widening, it's going to start at Phillips Drive and go along I-75. And then we got, uh, the, the, um, McDonald Parkway as well. It's going to be, and there's going, all that infrastructure is going to be in place and within the next, uh, I'm going to say three years. So let every commissioner go out and look at the location and just, and then we can come back and, and put a resolution together. Because I, I don't like surprises. I know exactly where it's located. Uh, but, but Commissioner Holmes, I, I think he may want to go out and look at the location before we put this resolution together. That's just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. I would like to ask the board, um, if we would just authorize them to go take a look and then we'll bring a resolution back. So that way everybody is knowledgeable where it is. There's no rush to do it today since we're not doing it before November. So, um, Sherri, if you guys will have something in concrete ready for us, price everything back by the first meeting of September. Board, are you all okay with that?
And, and, um, Vice Chair Clemens, when we get through the bonding this afternoon, we're going to bring back to the board a comprehensive plan at the next meeting and this will be a part of that comprehensive plan.
Sounds good. Okay. If there are no other comments from our county manager and no other questions from commissioners at this time, uh, Amika, thank you for staying on and you see that your prayers have been answered. Um, board will be moving forward with that. So you can let your staff know. Um, we'll open up the floor for commissioner comments. Um, we'll start with District One and proceed in order.
So today I'm at the county building zooming. And I think from this day forward, for the next meeting forward, I think it's, uh, with employees and we ask, and were they here every day? We have our public coming in. They come in last meeting with public comment. Um, Commissioner Thomas had a, she kicked off a program last week here. So I think from moving forward, I think we need to, uh, have all our commissioner meetings here at the building. And that's, that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Uh, no comments from two? District three?
Uh, yes, I'm also at the building today and meeting. I think it's important for us to be here. You know, staff has done a fantastic job of putting up plexiglass and taking every kind of safety precaution they can actually take. I think it's important for us to meet here at the building. Uh, I, I totally support that and I, I hope we'll, uh, this will be our last Zoom meeting. And, uh, so, you know, we've got the tag office here, county businesses is open for business every day. And, uh, if it's safe enough, our employees to be here, it certainly ought to be safe enough for us. Thank you.
Uh, board, did you have anything before we go to District Five?
Yeah, I'm going to say something just to make District Five wait. I just want to say, um, uh, kudos to our administrative offices for all the things they have been doing to make sure that, uh, Henry County knows that COVID-19 is still killing out here. And it has really caused some damage in our communities all around us, you guys. We cannot take it lightly. And yes, I did kick off a program here, but as you can see, we, we make sure that our children were well protected and stayed distant apart and practice the CDC guidelines and all that we do. I don't have any problem meeting with anybody there. As long as we are following guidelines, then everybody need to follow the guidelines and mask up and be prepared to, uh, respect the distance between each other, um, so that we don't cause any infections among ourselves. Uh, uh, and away from that for just a moment, I just want to say that we made a lot of positive moves today for Henry County. And we took the time to start talking about our roads and talking about connectivity between the different, um, places from Jonesboro Road all the way down to Hudson Bridge. That's huge. And we took time to talk about the lighting that's needed in different areas. Because people are walking more, they're getting into their community more, they're wanting to get out more. That's huge for safety. So I want to thank this board for working together and looking forward to working with you as we progressively move here in county forward. I think we're headed in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes, District Five.
Yes, I want to thank, um, um, Gary and Johnny for bringing up the issues around safety and COVID. Um, I was made aware over the, over the past couple of days that, um, there has been some issues um, at both the courthouse and within our police force with, with, um, individuals, a number of individuals, um, testing positive for COVID. Um, I would like the county manager or the assistant county manager to, uh, address that. So, you know, it's still an issue. And, um, you know, you know, I told Chair Wood a few weeks ago, uh, with the issue, the health issues that my wife had, I would kill myself if I came home and, um, and she got COVID from me at, being at the government building. So if you guys can address, um, the number of people who, um, who were affected recently with COVID at the county, um, just, you know, for everybody's, um, information, that would be great.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes, I, I'll address it. However, we don't have anything that's linked to the county that says it was done here. We do have our public safety team who is out in the public every day. And we do have a few of them due to HIPAA. I'm not releasing names or I don't even have the names myself. Just have the number of personnel that is, uh, definitely has, has had some, uh, outside contamination. Now, I will tell you, I'm very proud of the team and, and, and the steps in place to make sure that they are wearing their masks. Everybody you see in the buildings wearing their masks. Everybody you see staying distance apart when they can. If they're not, they're doing, taking appropriate actions. Our public safety team, I think we're at day 162 of our fire EMS response that deal with COVID every day and, and done a very good job in limiting their exposure. Uh, and we have had some, again, uh, as, as public health determined last time that they, we met a few weeks ago, our hotspots are, are, are large, big box shopping retail, uh, places we have here. That's our, by data-driven resources that shows hotspots and, and definitely, um, COVID is there and exposure to COVID is there. All we can do is take every step possible to, uh, to mitigate it here internally. Uh, but again, we cannot trace, do anything with the contact tracing. We trace it back. None of us been linked back to, to our county, uh, to our individual exposure in the county, uh, through contact tracing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
I have a question, please. I have asked the county manager, and I think the deputy county manager was present to one of our meetings or two of them, about putting signs in the county to help with, uh, educating our public that COVID-19 is still alive and killing. Especially putting some signs out in our parks areas where people are walking, maintaining your distance. Let's, something positive. Let's like mask up and stay alive. Keep your distance and stay healthy. Little bitty, um, tip business signs that we can put out and even give to people to place in their place of business. Are we looking at that? I know we have a sign department. Is that something we can do? Our county manager, do I have to put something out of my budget? I'd be glad to do it if it's a cost factor to, to say, let's print out some of these signs and get them out. I don't want flyers. I want waterproof signs, almost like yard signs that we can put out in different areas. And it should be compliments of our government to say, we want you to live and stay alive. I'll give you some statements that you can put out. Will you work on that and make it happen for me?
Yeah, Commissioner Thomas, I, I, I will. And we, we definitely have some signage out. However, we have been going to businesses putting the please mask up, stay alive campaign. Don and EMA team, I think, uh, we did a, we don't publicize everyone, but there were Sams a couple of days or end of last week giving out masks. They've been to different businesses asking them, do you have your supplies? And actually handing out part of our mask campaign, we're, we're in with District Four Health. So we are out there. We'll do a better job. Make sure you guys are aware and, and, and that signage that, 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 make sure our signage are still there in the park. Cause it's been a while since we put them out. Make sure they haven't been taken up or anything.
Uh, Commissioner Barnum?
Brad, I, I wanted to ask you a question. I know, uh, last week, I, I took my grandkids and we went down to Heritage Park and we went by McDonald's and of course, everybody wants something. Definitely, we had to go to Taco Bell. We had to do all that, get in line and, but we went down to Heritage Park and, uh, I'll tell you, I was very disappointed. Uh, in fact, we, we was a little concerned about eating there because it was so dirty, filthy. And, uh, and I was looking at the playground equipment and I just wondered, you know, how are we sterilizing our playground equipments for our children? Uh, do we spray them with any kind of disinfectant on a daily basis or weekly basis? What are we doing?
Commissioner, definitely, uh, if we're doing anything, it's not enough for that. My understanding was they were still closed if somebody has not removed the tape. The problem we have is people removing the tape as soon as we put the tape out at our facilities within playgrounds. But I'll, I'll check with that and get answers to the board. But my understanding, our playground equipment right there was still closed, along with the governor's orders.
One other thing I'd like to ask, are we, uh, mandating, uh, masks for people to come into our facilities? Administrative offices, courtrooms, things that we have some type of control over? Are we mandating masks for them to come into our facilities?
So we're doing the governor's orders. We are mandating masks. Luckily, we vote, the ones that by order for the governor, we had that basically totally refused, which is only less than a handful. We've conducted business out in the parking lots and have been very receptive. I would tell you, the staff, and I think you've seen people in our audience, we kind of do the different, uh, group here. We spread out in there with our masks on in the building, using one podium to talk just to make it a better meeting, uh, uh, platform. Uh, but staff wear masks. They check, check you when you come in the building, uh, the same thing. Our courts are down to limited service with a judicial order. Um, over there, so they're doing emergency, and everything's visual or virtual, uh, through equipment we've, we've purchased. And we've actually upgrading their other mobile equipment to enhance their, their ability to do virtual court sessions, uh, which has been really good. But, uh, but as for that, Commissioner, we, we've, our citizens have been great. But outside my office, you see the line going for the tag office. People get out with masks. I tell you, I've not seen anybody get out and not have a mask while they're standing in line.
I'm asking though, are we mandating it for the public to come into our facilities? Do we have anything to mandate masks for them to come into our facility? Not by volunteer, but mandating it.
So the reason I came up is, is to make this, uh, observation. The governor's executive order purports to prohibit us from mandating masks. We are, however, encouraging in the strongest possible way that people do so. So I think the, the short answer to your question is the law right now would prohibit us from mandating masks. But I think Brad described the measures that are being taken to do the best we can do, subject to the governor's order.
To the governor's order. In other words, we could be sued if we did it, just like he did Keisha Lance a bottom or something.
And it would be unenforceable. So there wouldn't be any real way we could enforce it.
Well, okay, I understand, but we need to do a little bit more. Um,
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Just, um, point of clarification as well. For those individuals that arrive at any county facility and they don't want to wear a mask, we will go outside and handle whatever services or businesses that they need. So we do send staff members outdoors to meet people in the parking lot, um, to get their tags, to answer planning and zoning questions. And we will set up any type of virtual platform for those that may need to do business with the county as well. So we don't turn them away, but we do have some other, um, measures in place to assist those that may show up here at the administration building wanting service.
Okay. I'll, I'll let it go for the moment.
Thank you.
Um, Sherri, if you would, um, I have sent you an email, uh, several emails over the past couple of weeks. Um, and I guess this is a question for Patrick. I would like to, um, get him to make sure that he is having that, the, the stuff that was left at Nash Farms from the ice skating rink removed immediately by the county. And then we can proceed with abandonment or whatever we need to do, but Nash Farms needs to be cleaned up. Uh, there's, or, uh, just check your emails. We don't have to discuss it now, but check your email. I've sent you an email about that. Uh, some code enforcement stuff and some other items that, um, it's four different items, but I just resend an email to you again to just go back and look at it.
Okay. I may have missed that, Commissioner Clemens, but we are working on the ice rink situation. Patrick's here.
Yeah, I speak to that. I did receive, um, I think it was late last week or, or maybe yesterday. I'm not sure when. The final bit of information I needed in order for me to make those demand letters. So they should be going out this afternoon or in the morning. And, um, at that, after that point, we'll deal with the, with the owner of those appropriately.
Yeah, but Sherri, the issue is, is that I understand Patrick has to do the legal part, but there's no reason that Parks and Rec can't go clean it up. So I would like to see that removed. And I did talk to JP, uh, this weekend. He just needs authorization from you to just go ahead and move it. Um, and get it moved and then we can deal with the rest of it later.
So our Parks and Rec team has already been authorized to clean it up and that's all of our part. So yes, we are on.
Just send another email to him, please. Just CC me. Thank you. Um, if there are no other comments from the commissioners, we're going to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting and see you all at 5 o'clock. Have a motion and a second. Uh, Commissioner Barnum, Commissioner Wilson, need a vote from both of you. Stephanie, it's a 5-0 for adjournment.
Thank you.
All right. See you guys at 5. Thank you.